It's preparing. It's live.
Mr. Kelly, do you mind speaking for a moment so we can test the audio?
Yeah, I serenaded in the budget session. I guess I didn't do that at this time, so.
And we just confirmed that the audio and the video are fine, so you can start when you are ready.
Okay, great. So I bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order this work session. Thank you for the transition to this to a virtual meeting due to COVID issues with senior administration personnel. We transitioned this meeting on Sunday from an in-person at the annex to a virtual meeting. The COVID challenges include one member of senior administration who was tested positive and several with close contact, quarantine mostly from outside the school system with family. We wish all of them well and a quick recovery and continued good health to those in quarantine. Appreciate everybody making this transition quickly, so in the, at the last minute. So that takes us to 2.02 certification of closed session. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only in the only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings requirements as stated in Virginia law on that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
You're muted, Lisa.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Jim, you're muted.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. I, uh, aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you much. Ms. Young and Dr. Beers, if you could turn the cameras on, that'd be appreciated for the public meeting. 3.01, the role is taken. Ms. Robinson?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here, thank you. Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That takes us to 4.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair and School Board members. I'm pleased to dedicate my report tonight to the selfless and outstanding work you do every day in service to WJCC schools. This month is School Board Appreciation Month, and the Virginia School Board Association has appropriately themed this year's recognition as 115 years of providing leadership, advocacy, and support. This theme reflects the partnership of the Virginia School Boards Association with local school board members as they serve their local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. WJCC seven school board members tirelessly contribute their time to represent our community and school division by establishing a vision for WJCC, working collaboratively to address topics of concern, and adopting policies and a budget to ensure all our initiatives have the resources to succeed for our approximately 1,100 students and 1,800 staff members and our larger community. Notably, the unique difficulties the COVID-19 pandemic presented in the last year have demanded additional considerations as we've made every effort to keep our students, employees, and community in good health while continuing to offer solid instruction to our students. I thank each of you for your collaboration and support during this very challenging time. On behalf of every employee and student at WJCC schools, I thank you for your exemplary service. In recognition of your efforts, a certificate of appreciation will be given to each of you when we resume our face-to-face board meetings later this month. Mr. Kelly, that's my report for this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Are any board members who have announcements or committee reports? Ms. Cook?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to let the public know that last week as part of our advocacy partnership with Virginia School Boards Association, we met with Senator Mason as a school board and included some colleagues from the Board of Supervisors and City Council, and then also with Delegate Mullin to just share with them our thoughts about what's going on in the General Assembly, particularly around funding. Later this week, we will meet with Delegate Batten as well. Additionally, this week I had the pleasure of serving on the Federal Relations Committee with the Virginia School Board Association and met with Congresswoman Luria, Congressman Whitman's staff, and Senators Kane and Warner to talk to them about the positions for the Virginia School Board Association around federal advocacy. They requested waivers for federally mandated testing, and the feedback we got on that was a little bit lukewarm, and they felt like because so much support had come through the stimulus packages to support K-12, that there was a hunger in Congress to continue testing. And I think that we talked to them about maybe one more year of a waiver of testing might be appropriate, so we'll see about that. We talked at length about bridging the homework gap around broadband access, and particularly Senator Warner is very much a strong supporter of that. We talked about the current stimulus package under consideration and the need to release, to help local governments because they bear the brunt of funding public education, and so they were open to that universally. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention was we talked about full funding for the IDEA, which as you all know, the federal government has not lived up to their promise when that legislation was passed. But we did talk a little bit about the impact specifically on WJCC around the exceptional family program in the military for which families in the military who have special needs children are allowed to not only request to be stationed near school division, and many pick WJCC schools, but they're allowed to ask to stay here. And so Senator Warner and Congresswoman Luria are really on top of this, and they are working with the DOD to see if divisions like ours in Virginia Beach and Fairfax were disproportionately impacted by the exceptional family program if some additional funding can be found through the DOD. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Appreciate your work in setting up those meetings with the delegates and the members of the General Assembly last week. That was much appreciated. Any other comments from board members? Okay, that takes us to 5.01, citizens' comments. Ms. Robinson?
Hi, my name is Madison Lee Spurlock, and I just like think that we should not go back for the rest of this year just because like cases are getting worse. Um, and yeah, I just feel like this year we should just keep doing it online. Um, because cases could get worse, and I just feel like it's not safe for students. And I think that like if we all go back into the building, like everybody or like a lot of people would get it, and then we'd all have to like go back to online, like in our houses.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Richardson, and I'm a student of Lafayette High School. And I have an opinion on whether we should go back to school or not. And I believe that we should not go back just yet because cases are still high. And I believe that we should just wait till it calms down more. And also, we have to worry about that people have grandparents at home, and they chose to go back, and then that means that the people.
Hello, my name is Michelle Warren, and I just needed to say I have three children in the WJCC school system, elementary, middle, and high school levels. And I understand everyone's concern. I'm in the medical field. I quite understand everyone's concern with, you know, the children's sociability and the children's being depressed and the children's grades being affected. But what frustrates me and my family is that it seems like the safety is not being put first and foremost. Life preservation should be the first and foremost important thing over anything else. Grades can be made up. Schoolwork can be made up. The kids will get back with their friends. However, when they have family members at home with pre-existing conditions and things of that nature that they affect, that only affects the family once an elderly family member passes or something of that dire nature. I don't think that that's being taken into consideration, and I also do not think that it's fear that parents who missed the deadline for the online virtual are now forced to send their kids to school. It's going to lead to a lot of issues. That's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Denise Studdard. I am a teacher in the Virtual Academy Elementary School. I'm calling to ask why Virtual Academy teachers are being told to come into the building two days a week to teach virtually. First, of course, this increases everybody's exposure to COVID. And do we have substitute teachers who are trained to teach virtually? Second, our students are at home, and they understand and find comfort in the fact that their teachers are at home, too. And third, we have all set up home offices with equipment to teach virtually. We have, most of us have our laptop, an extra monitor, a document camera, lighting to make us well seen on Zoom, cords that go with all of this, plus the books and materials that we use. It takes a lot of time to disconnect all of this, lug it into school, and reconnect this only to teach virtually. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, this is Anne Beatty. I work at Norge Elementary. I just wanted to comment that I read a study from the New England Journal of Medicine in December, and they were talking about the Pfizer BioNTech vaccine as well as the Moderna vaccine. My concern is that protection doesn't start until 12 days after the first shot, and it's 52% effective a few weeks later. And a week after the second vaccine, the effectiveness rises up to 95%. With the Moderna, it's 51% after two weeks and after the first injection, and then to 94% two weeks after the second dose. It seems with our rising and high rates of infection and in our area that it would only make sense to bring everybody back after we've passed the two weeks after the second dose of the vaccine. I'd like to see that's what I think would be the best for the teachers anyway. Thank you so much. Bye.
Gaila Baumgart, I'm calling to encourage brave and robust plans to make up for the loss of learning and services. Please open the schools immediately for all families who choose it. There is no need to wait another day. Your own health team urged you to not delay and even said a few days would be beneficial. Please stop planning to open the schools and open. There is never going to be the perfect time. I call on you to abandon the idea of incremental, slow-paced steps. You don't fight a fire with a trickle of water. You have already missed so much time, and we should not delay even another day when the children are suffering as presented by your own health team. In the hybrid plan for elementary in-person days, you have taken an hour out of the school day. Please put that hour back in and in fact add another hour. Please offer summer school to every student who wants it. We need teachers to step up and be willing to staff summer school, and they need to be paid well for that. I know many teachers that were willing to go back to school in September and have been willing this whole time. Please stop this narrative that it is not safe. You also need to organize an army of volunteers to help the staff remediate and stop using bureaucratic excuses to not allow the volunteers to work with the children in person and on Zoom. You can offer help to students in many ways if you're only willing to put in half as much effort into helping the kids that you have put into your many rationales for cutting services and staying online. Thank you.
My name is Greta Van, and I live in Williamsburg, Virginia. I have a seventh grader at Hornsby Middle, and I am calling for support to get these kids back to full-time in-person learning immediately. This has gone on long enough. There have been other school systems who have done this effectively. There is a way to social distance and mask up and practice proper hygiene. Our kids are suffering. Their mental health is suffering. Their academics are suffering. Their families are suffering. Listen to your own experts. Really take the time to analyze the science and understand it. Quit just taking the easy decision to say we will not go back, and it's not impactful to these kids. It's horrendous. Do your job. Get these bad kids back to school full-time. Quit placing your staff over the students. It's got to stop. Send these kids back to school full-time immediately.
My name is Crystal Jackson. I'm calling to ask you and your school board member staff to look at the science and listen to your healthcare doctors, your team, and follow surrounding counties, cities, and open the schools in person. Our kids are struggling mentally, socially, academically, and you're, obviously, your school board members and you don't seem to care. And that's evident by the comments made, by what not, it doesn't matter if the kids are out of school a year or two. It's really hard to tell these kids that they should care about school when you yourself doesn't. I don't understand why the vaccine now, now you're waiting on the vaccine. It just proves that you had no intention of going back in the first place because now this is the next excuse. James City County, Williamsburg Public Schools, you have let us down, and it's really sad that when people are thinking about moving out of this area because of it.
Chad Adcock, really need you guys to open schools back up. The kids cannot learn in this environment effectively. I don't see how they can do these SOL testings and stuff that you're asking them to do when they can barely even learn what's going on in regular class. You know, this stuff's got to stop somewhere, so that's my vote. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Brittany Byer. I am just calling to voice my opinion that kids should be in school. I have a second grader and a kindergartner that are really struggling with online learning. Just would like our voices to be heard since there are several other districts very close to us that are going back to school five days a week. Thank you.
Heather Jones, I am calling to express my thoughts on making sure these kids get back to school as soon as possible. There's no reason that teachers should be worried. They need to be in school teaching our kids, and they should be advocating for that. They are out and about in the public. They are in restaurants. They are in gyms working out. They are shopping. If they can do that, then they can certainly be teaching our kids face-to-face in school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Jeffrey. I'm the mother of two War Hill students, and I demand that our children return to school. Enough is enough. The CDC says then get them back to school. The Academy of Pediatrics says get them back to school. The governor says get them back to school, and our local panel of experts says get them back to school. But yet you sit there and refuse to allow our students back into school even though we have a virtual option. You say our kids are missing a year or two of school is no big deal. You say you're tired of hearing from parents wanting their kids back in school, and you claim that the mental health of your 30-year-old daughter is more important than our children's mental health here in WJCC. Shame on you. Recently, one of my sons was diagnosed with extreme depression and is now on drugs to support this. I'm in the process of removing him from WJCC, and will be sending him to private school for his remaining time in high school. Shame on you. Get these kids back to school.
This is Carrie Henderson. We all know that plans are made for some to start back February 15th, but many of us are nervous that this will actually happen. The goalposts keep moving. We, the parents, are no longer sure what the benchmarks even are anymore that will get our children consistently back in school and back on track. Is it guidance from the CDC? Because that's been given. Is it safety measures in schools? The school my son attends, those safety measures are more extensive than in my workplace, and I feel completely safe at work. Is it vaccines? James City County teachers were put at the very front of the line of 1B candidates. They were given the vaccine before thousands of other essential workers that have been in-person doing their jobs throughout the entirety of the pandemic. But are we as parents confident that this will get teachers back in the buildings? Honestly, no. So the benchmarks appear to still be fear that in-person instruction will increase community transmission, and that is shown to be false. So, School Board, please tell your community what it'll take to save the sinking ship.
Hi, my name is Brooke Van Bisking. I'm calling to express my desire for schools to open full-time for in-person learning for those families that choose it. And I am also expressing a strong desire to stick with the plan of opening for in-person learning February 16th and not postponing that date again. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Jones. I have three kids in three WJCC schools, Stonehouse, Twainna Mill, and Blighton. I'm calling to voice my concern over these decisions to keep schools closed and students forced into ineffective virtual learning. I'd like to remind everyone that the Supreme Court handled this already in 1954 with their unanimous decision in Brown versus the Board of Education stating clearly that separate educational facilities are inherently unequal and a violation of the Equal Protection Act in the Constitution. These children are being disenfranchised by your careless decisions while their peers in private school and in surrounding districts are already back in person. The wedge between children in wealthy families that can afford private tutoring and tuition and those that cannot is growing, and it's growing solely because of these decisions. There isn't science to support your extremist approach. In fact, all evidence supports the contrary. Children must go back to school. This is discrimination. Thank you.
Thomas Byer, I believe schools should be open five days a week, not two days a week. I believe the School Board needs to get their act together and look to other counties and realize that schools can be opened safely and use the science that supports that and stop using all these excuses that you continually use and start listening to parents who actually care about their students as opposed to people on the School Board who obviously don't.
To the School Board, my name is Joshua Jackson. I have a daughter who attends JBB Elementary School in Williamsburg. I'm leaving this note to ask that you push forward the opening of schools and leave them open. My daughter is doing fine academically because I am sitting right next to her, which takes away from my daily work. However, it's what it takes, but she is struggling emotionally, and she is struggling spiritually. Reopen the schools, please.
Monique Carn, I believe schools need to be open now, five days a week. Two words come to mind: transparency and equitable. The first transparency is the lack of transparency here in WJCC. Parents and the public need to be aware that one person, the superintendent, is the sole entity who gets to decide if our students can come back to school. The School Board has zero voting power per the bylaws, so essentially they're not representing their constituents by not having a voice. These bylaws need to be changed. Equitable, WJCC has given the choice for virtual learning back in September, and now again, they're offering those families who believe they need to stay virtual for this third quarter. These kids have requested, and their needs are being met. But what about all the families who have wanted in-person from day one? Why need this slow, drawn-out hybrid schedule? Open the schools five days a week now. Other communities and school districts have chosen to be bold and not risk adverse as WJCC has, and they've been able to mitigate risk and institute protocols. That is the one job that WJCC administration has failed as an employer and an educational institute. Your job was to make your employees feel safe.
Hello, my name is Hillary Dever. I was just calling again to voice my concern over schools being closed right now, and I please encourage you to open them immediately for full-time learning and at least give people an option for full-time learning and have a choice. This has gone on far too long. We are all very very aware of the science that's out there, and the facts behind this decision doesn't really make any sense any longer. It's been over almost a year, 300 days of being home. My child is suffering, and I cannot watch her suffer any longer. I have a second grader, and the toll that it's taking cannot continue. So please open the schools. We're very tired. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Boyer. I'm calling to advocate to allow parents at the outdoor sporting events for the fall sports that have been rescheduled for this coming winter month. There is no reason why we can't social distance with masks and be able to space out in the stadiums and the fields. If parents are allowed on the sidelines at other sporting events within the county, there's no reason why they can't for WJ City County School participation. Parents need to be at the games in case there are injuries for their children, and being able to be on-site is very much appreciated. Thank you.
My name is Courtney Godet. My two daughters go to Laurel Lane Elementary School, and I am calling to advocate opening schools back full-time. I feel like so much emotional health issues have just been escalating as a result of the entire family being stressed to the max which are trying to maintain adequate learning skills while still paying bills and working full-time and trying to keep house and trying to keep kids happy and learning and engaged. And I feel like we are at that time that we need to reopen schools and that there are plenty of public spaces that have been open and successful with wearing masks and people not getting sick. And I think that we need to go through with this. There's all the private schools that have remained open that you can see research on, and you can see data that shows that they have not had to close or that they have not had some sort of crazy exposure as a result of having schools open the entire school year except for ours, public schools. Thank you. Bye.
Crystal Taylor, I wanted to make a statement that I really think that it is important for the schools to open back up. I know you've probably heard this a million times, but it's really, really hard on families that are, that have two working parents and other children in the house that are not school age. So I just wanted to make a statement that I would really like the schools to open back up. Thanks.
This is Joseph Boyer. I believe spectators should be allowed outside sporting events. It is an outdoor location. Parents, teachers, students would like to attend these events. There's absolutely no reason why they cannot be in an outside environment, wearing masks, practicing whatever social distancing that we can. Students are being allowed in schools. They're going to be together in rooms, in interiors of buildings. There's no reason why sporting events should not have spectators. There's no reason why sporting events should not have spectators. Thank you.
My name is Rochelle Hamilton. I'm calling to ask Dr. Heron to follow the medical advice of our own WJCC Advisory Committee for reopening schools along with the current science and offer an in-person school option immediately to all age groups of students. Science supports that schools can be safely reopened with proper mitigation strategies in place. Thank you.
My name is Robyn Lobsher. I am calling on behalf of reopening the schools. I am a mother to a senior and a freshman at War Hill High School. I have been teaching in private school in-person since September 8th with no COVID cases.
My name is Jonathan Hamilton. I live at 2701 Small Page Trace. I support an in-person option done safely, as modeled by many other school districts, that follows the current science. I support an in-person option done safely, as modeled by many other school districts, that follows the current science.
Okay, thank you to all the members of the public who called in and left messages for this evening's meeting. We appreciate everyone's input and everyone's thoughts and take those points very seriously. So thank you very much for your interest and engagement in our school system. That takes us to 6.01, Presentation by Mosley Architects of Facilities Master Plan Process. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to introduce this item under guest this evening. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's agenda item is a continuation of a space needs analysis that you originally received in August of 2020. As you may recall, the James City County Board of Supervisors and the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Heron, authorized the preparation of a facility space needs analysis to determine the amount of interior building space needed by Williamsburg James City County School Administration to operate over the next 20 years. The Facilities Master Plan is the second step of the two-step process and details the options to meet the space needs and identify one option as preferred master plan concept to carry forward to implementation. Tonight, we have Sean Gordon, who is the Chief Civil Engineer for James City County, and Grace Boone, who is the Director of General Services for James City County, along with representatives of Mosley Architects, who will provide an explanation of the master planning process and answer any questions pertaining to the presentation. Sean?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for meeting with us this evening to kick off the Facilities Master Plan Process. Also with us tonight is Adam Bricker, the Project Manager and Presenter for Mosley Architects. He's accompanied by Tony Bell and Stephen Halsey, managing principles with Mosley Architects. Before we start, I'd like to share a few highlights. As Mr. Snipes had mentioned, the Space Needs Assessment was completed in August of 2020. It was identified by the Board of Supervisors in the 2035 Strategic Plan. The Facilities Master Plan is the next step in the process to determine the best option of incorporating spaces identified in the Space Needs Assessment in the future facilities. This Facilities Master Plan will include County Administration, the Williamsburg James City County Courts, and the Williamsburg James City County Public Schools Administration. And our goal is to complete the Facilities Master Plan by the end of this fiscal year 21. I'll now turn it over to Adam Bricker to give an overview and gather input on desired options and concepts to investigate with the Master Plan Process. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Adam Bricker with Mosley Architects, and I've got a very short presentation for you here. Kind of want to give you an overview of the process, talk a little bit about where we went with the space needs and how that relates to a master plan. And then talk, our main reason here this evening is to kind of start the conversation with you to hear your initial thoughts on the future for these facilities and how, any preconceived notions that you have, and we want to kind of hear from you. So after, at the end of the process, we'll turn it over to you for comments, but also spur your thoughts as we move forward in this process. These are the three facilities we looked at as part of the Space Needs Assessment, the two buildings, both the Administration Building and the adjacent Annex, and then also your Operations and Maintenance Building out on Jolly Pond. These are all the departments that we looked at as part of our space needs study. And as we went through, we met with each department and talked about every job position and their individual needs to develop the space for each department. Our goal for the whole process is to develop a plan that Williamsburg James City County Schools can forward and implement that will meet the space needs through the year 2040, as outlined in the Space Needs Analysis. And really, the whole point of the process and the reason we do a master plan is to be proactive in planning your facilities and your space instead of reactive. Many localities, as they grow and have new needs, find themselves short on space without a plan to address it. So going through this process helps you be prepared so that you have the facilities you need as the needs arise. So it's broken down into three tasks. Right now, we're doing the kickoff meeting under Task 2. Task 1 is really focused on looking at existing facilities, if they are to be expanded, and investigating sites for new facilities or investigating the existing sites that you have and how that would work with any expansions or changes. Task 2 is kind of the process of working through that. So after kicking it off, we'll want to get your, any kind of givens, anything that you have this evening or in the near future, and then do a design charrette with the stakeholders. Those are the different groups, the different departments, and the School Board. And we'll develop options. So in conjunction with your thoughts and the stakeholders, we'll develop some different options for how to meet the need. Our next big meeting with the School Board would be at 75%. So we'll have various options, and the goal would be to select the preferred option to move forward. We'll then revise that and review it with the stakeholders again. Here's an example showing what this looks like. So this is an existing facility, and the existing departments are located in here. And we did this analysis as part of the space needs. The master plan focuses on is where we go from there. So in the second option, you'll notice two departments actually went away. They went to a different facility. And this shows the reallocation of those departments in an existing building and then an expansion. So that is the solution in this example of how to meet that space need. And this would be different, obviously, if we were looking at a new building. And then the final part of the master plan is generating a report. So that's the actual document. And that would be a similar process. We'll meet with the stakeholders once we've put a draft together to review it and refine that, and then put it before the three boards and stakeholders groups to approve the both James City County administrative functions as well as the School Board and Courts. So as we start this process, this is kind of where we start to think about the questions. These are the facilities that you currently occupy, and we've studied and analyzed those. We haven't discussed other future options or other sites or other things that we need to investigate. This is sort of the breakdown of how the spaces are now. So you'll see the Operations and Maintenance Building is a little tight on space. They're about 38% undersized based on their current needs. The School Administration and Annex Buildings are actually about the right size for the current needs. The biggest challenges that you've had there are the, just the conversion of the school into office space makes it less efficient. So while the total building is close, you have a large corridor and spaces that are more difficult to use as office space since they were configured for classroom. And then this is really the questions. This is kind of kicking off the questions and thought processes. This is the big picture. So this is really three questions for each of your two facilities. So the first question for each building is, is the location optimal? Is the School Board's headquarters the optimal location? And is the School Operations and Maintenance Building at the optimum location in the county to serve the need? And then are there other needs for that building site? So in the case of the Administration Building, it's adjacent to the existing middle school. So if there are plans for that to be used in any capacity there, that would be a big determining factor in that site. And then if the answers to that are yes and no for those first two questions, are there any exceptions to expanding and renovating the existing facilities to meet that long-term need? So those are the questions, and I know you may not have answers to those tonight, but that's kind of the beginning of the process to start to identify where we go next. That's really the end of my formal presentation. If you'd like to get any feedback or givens or things that you already have kind of in your heads about where this will go.
I can't see all the board members. So if you want to just chime in, as you see?
Mr. Chair, this is Kira.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess I have a question. Is this going to be a Williamsburg James City County Public Schools Facilities Master Plan? Or is this a James City County Facilities Master Plan that Williamsburg James City County Schools are part of?
Do you want to answer that, Sean, or would you like me to answer that?
It would be the Williamsburg James City County Public Schools Administration Facilities Master Plan. The schools themselves are not, were not part of the Space Needs Analysis, and right now, they have not been deemed part of the Facilities Master Plan either.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I'm sorry, I didn't ask my question well enough. So I guess my question is, is this a WJCC Administration Facilities Master Plan? Or is it a James City County Master Plan that WJCC Administration is part of? In other words, is this just ours? Or are we folding it into James City Counties? Because if it's the latter...
So it's funded through the James City County School Board, but this is really geared toward meeting your needs. So this isn't to provide a special benefit to the county. This report is actually its own kind of standalone report, similar to the Space Needs Analysis. There was a report dedicated just to Williamsburg James City County School Administration.
And maybe to clarify a little bit more, there hasn't been any intent to merge the County Administration's Facility Master Plan with the Public School Administration's Facility Master Plan, if that's kind of what you were asking.
So there would be two separate plans?
Yes, they, right now, they would be standalone master plans, as well as the courts. The courts would have their own master plan as well.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. I'm really delighted to be included. I just wanted to, you know, because I have heard, some members of the Board of Supervisors talk about consolidated administrative space. And so if that's what this was going towards, I just thought we needed to have a different conversation. But if this is going to be standalone, then I'm good with that.
I think there, Adam, you may have, do you have the very next slide to you that just shows the graphic?
I do. So I do have a couple more slides just to help answer any questions. This was a master planning study for Hanover County, and the buildings in green were existing facilities, and the buildings in yellow were new facilities that were part of the master plan. And quite several of these have actually already been built since this was performed. Did you have a point to talk to in relation to this, Sean?
No, I just wanted the School Board to be able to see the examples and kind of what a finished product could look like, part of the finished product would look like for the master plan.
And this is, you know, the actual graphics will probably vary a little bit. You know, as part of the master plan with the county, they have over 40 facilities that we're looking at, and some of those will likely consolidate. I think that's sort of part of that long look ahead. Obviously, Williamsburg James City County Schools only has two locations, so it's going to be much more building-focused and less large-site-focused as this was.
What you see here on this diagram obviously is, as Adam said, the buildings in green are the existing facilities. The buildings in yellow are either expansions to existing facilities, like you see there in the middle, 11 and 12. That's how we would illustrate an expansion of an existing facility. So for example, your Operations and Maintenance Facility on Jolly Pond, if we were to propose an expansion of that facility, it would look something indicative of what you see there. If, for example, however, if you would say a new admin building would be proposed, i.e., you wanted to vacate your existing facility there at the James Blair Middle School campus and propose a new facility, either on a site you've already selected or a site yet to be found, we would develop that with you, determine the site requirements, whether it be square footage or parking requirements combined together. And with that documentation, you can then go about finding these sites if you have not already identified one. But back to your original question, Ms. Cook. Dr. Heron was very clear at the very onset of the Space Needs Assessment Study. This was to be done separate and independent of what was being done on the county side. Although the county is involved with regard to the management, both Sean and Grace are facilitating this exercise, have a great relationship with the School Board already. These two are separate and distinct, and one does not impact the other. However, if you would desire us to have conversations with the two as far as any kind of symbiosis or sharing of facilities, you know, we are here to serve you. We do not come with any premonitions. We do not come with any thoughts. We are here tonight to listen to you as to what are your desires before we even start putting pencil to paper on these two facilities that you currently have.
Thank you. I think, you know, certainly, you may be aware that the current administration is eventually going to be demolished for the eventual expansion of James Blair. So that function would need to find a new site. But we, you know, work very closely, as you indicated, with both of the localities, James City County primarily because they're the, far and away, the largest funder. And so in terms of site location, and we can't, we don't do anything without them. If we were going to need new land, they would, you know, be obviously heavily involved in that and have to actually purchase it and grant it to us. So, you know, clearly, there's a very, would have to be a very strong partnership. But the genesis of my question was if it's going to be, if there's going to be any co-location or synergy of any kind, I just think that's a conversation that we need to have in a joint meeting because there are three bodies involved. And so the City Council, Board Supervisors, and School Board. So I just didn't want that to be assumed. I just wanted to make sure if we do move forward in any kind of synergistic way that we have, you know, a public, an intentional conversation about it.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think those kinds of big decisions would definitely be something to be made between everyone who's involved, not just some unilateral decision.
Ms. Ollby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of different questions just to help me understand this process kind of building on what Ms. Cook's points were. So if this is, in fact, WJCC Schools' master plan, would it not include all of our buildings? Do master plans typically only include some of the entities' buildings?
This is, so our scope is only for administrative functions. So as mentioned earlier, it was funded through James City County, and we're looking at all of their administrative functions and the courts. We're only looking at the administrative support functions for Williamsburg James City County Schools. We have not done an analysis of the actual school facility, so that was not part of the master plan.
Okay, and just wanted to make that clear. And then Ms. Cook did make the point that, of course, at some point in time, where our administration is currently located is supposed to be another school. And then just wanted to clarify, it was my understanding that James City County Board of Supervisors did fund this, although earlier I thought you said the school funded it, so...
No, no.
You're correct, Ms. Ollby. The county did fund it. But as Dr. Heron said... But as Dr. Heron said from the very onset, even though the county is funding it, we want it to be separate and distinct in a separate document moving forward.
And just, thank you. I I just have a couple of other questions. So I think it was maybe the first or second slide when you were looking, you kind of listed departments that were considered when looking at space needs. I don't remember seeing the s- school board as a department. And I know one of the things that we had talked about when board members were given the opportunity to provide input was is that we do need meeting space?
Yes, so we did not have um the the departments included only the full-time employees. Um the shared functions and and the large meeting space are part of the shared spaces between departments that are under item eleven.
Okay, so we would be an item eleven. Okay, and then just with another slide, I know it was just kind of an example, but when you were talking about possibly like relocating departments, it looked like um the purple ones, like like special education went someplace else that, and I know it's just a, but like where did it go? Where where would it go to?
Well, I mean, this would be uh just, this is just to kind of show you what it looks like. So this example is is sort of in it in its own bubble. But um I I don't know that going to a different building maybe applies in in this case. That would just be one example of how you would free up space if you were renovating facilities and you had somewhere else that it made sense to go if you were putting your um special education was was paired out to various uh schools or something like that. That would be one way of looking at it. But I don't think that's anything like what we're talking about here.
Okay, and then just one last question.
Ms. Ollby, one one other mention too, this example is not your actual floor plan. It's just a generic building floor plan that's that's there, so.
Okay.
As an example, sorry to interrupt.
And then just one last question, given the fact that the our existing space that we're in is really, really old, um it is it still firstly considered that it would be renovated and modified versus uh a new building?
I I mean, we've definitely heard some feedback and 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 the vacating of the site makes it it sound like staying in the existing facility is is probably not an option. I I think if you're looking to go to a new location, something that's either purpose-built or something that's a little bit more tailored as office space would work much better than something that's converted from a school. I mean, we've definitely, Mosley Architects has converted lots of schools into lots of different functions. They're solidly built and and it's very difficult to tear something down. But they are more difficult to use for office space. They've got corridors that are far larger than they need to be for offices. You have to fit offices and conference rooms within the footprints of existing classrooms. So it does have a lot of challenges. And 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 uh the one other slide that I had showing the if it um the space, it was you have enough space in the existing building for your current need. It's just that a lot of it is corridors or, you know, some of the offices are very, very large, and then some of them are very, very small. So um certainly, that's something to consider if you're looking for another a nu- new facility, if if it's an existing or or a new building, and something purpose-built would work much better at meeting your specific needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I I just also have a question. Uh you showed us the ma- the map for Hanover, I believe it was Hanover. Um what what facilities are included on on this map? I mean, you you said this is an example of a master plan. Is this an example of a master plan for the county? Does it include school, school administration buildings? What does it exactly include?
This example was uh the county master plan. So the reason we have this is to show how this might look as a site plan. Um so it's a rendered site plan, and it shows the building's number and talks about whether they're new or existing. So we were just kind of trying to capture what it would look like, not necessarily that this is a a a site master plan tailored just to a a school administration.
Okay, because I I do think I agree with Ms. Cook and Ms. Ollby that if it the idea that uh school administration would be part of this, that would that would need to be a different uh discussion. I do believe that that would be absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other board members have questions or comments?
Okay, thank you much. Um so so when you look at the master plan, what are we looking at as far as a time horizon? So we talked earlier about James Blair eventually going away as we expand to as the the school administration building to James Blair, going away and relocating to a different location once we expand James Blair, but there's no real definitive date for when that's going to occur. So um so how far out is this master plan looking?
Well, the master plan is designed to go out twenty years. Now, obviously, it's more accurate the closer we are in time, so it's easier for us to predict what things will look like in five years than it is ten years. And and it's easier to predict ten years than twenty years. Twenty years is, I think, Tony likes to say, that's the crystal ball. Um we can generally predict with some accuracy ten years out, and that's that's the most useful part of the the planning horizon. But it helps us to look as far into the future as we can with our plan, um just so that we're making decisions in the ten-year mark that aren't causing us problems ten years later. Um but but these are the kinds of documents that do generally, it's good to update them periodically. Generally, it's good to refresh them after five years and then to take a more serious look at the ten-year mark a- as times have changed and maybe regulations or or practices have changed. So um but in terms of the timeline for your facilities, that's part of what we'll look at at the study. So if we, you know, trying to nail down when we need to move the administrative building, obviously, you'd want to have the new one constructed in time before you'd have to tear it down. So that would be part of what we would develop with this plan.
Yeah, and I would I would expect that we would do that well inside the twenty-year timeframe um as far as a new administration building. So so when you, has the county given you any kind of guidance as far as as growth and growth of county requirements going forward over the next twenty years?
Well, we've done, we've tracked population growth, so um this may be a little less specific to schools, because with the county, our our look was at the total population, not just the school age population. But we haven't really, I mean, maybe I'm not quite following your your question.
So if the county, if the county is in development of their master plan is saying that their police force or fire department or that those services are going to grow, they would, then you would have to figure out, you know, how much how much those would have to grow and potentially where they would need to be located, I would assume.
And that was part of the Space Needs and uh assessment that we did. So the document for the Space Needs is, we do look at population projections as part of that, but that's not the driver for how we plan the space. We usually, we we meet with all the departments and we met with all of all of your departments as well to talk about their needs and changes in education, um new positions that have come about, maybe not because of population, but because of uh the demand for for certain services that maybe exist in a lesser form now or don't or or new. So that that can also be a big driver for staffing, not just how many students you have or or the population.
Okay, so you have you have gotten that kind of um look from our administration um of, and I guess the time horizon was twenty years, although as you say, the first ten is crystal ball and the next ten is kind of fantasy. But uh um is is that what their vision was, was try to give you over the next twenty years?
Uh twenty years is usually what we're looking at for a master plan. I mean, some of that goes to that's just sort of the the as far out as we can reasonably plan. Um and it's also a useful timeline in terms of how long it takes to get buildings built. So in terms of addressing your building needs and your and your need for space and sites, that's a useful timeline to be able to think that far ahead to the extent that we can.
Okay, that's pretty close to our timeline for building new schools, so uh appreciate that.
Um Space Needs Assessment did include current need, five-year, ten-year, and twenty-year. So we didn't just jump out to the twenty-year, Mr. Chair.
Okay, because uh I I think as as was stated, the 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 current administration building in the in the retired James Blair Middle School complex, uh there's a lot more square footage there than is necessarily needed for um the administration that we have currently. And uh um but it's very inefficient as far as how it's broken up and by classroom. And as was mentioned, um hallways. And I could probably even say the bathrooms are bigger than bathrooms need to be, because, you know, it's a former middle school or a former high school, then a former middle school. So uh just.
Yeah, when you look at our, when you look at the Space Needs Analysis, we use a term, we call it, um, you know, it's it's our efficiency factor. It's almost, i- it's not really, you know, it's nice to be more efficient, but usually we're using the efficiency factor because we're we're trying to plan different types of facilities. So a courthouse has a different efficiency factor than an office building.
Sure.
Courthouses are really inefficient, because you've got three separate paths of travel. Um, schools have larger corridors, so that affects a school's efficiency factor. So it's good if you can be more efficient, because your layout works very nicely, but you are still sort of limited by what different types of buildings require.
Okay.
So.
Sure, um. That's that's all that I have. Uh any of the, any board members have any final comments before we go? Okay, um Sean, thank you, and uh thanks to the folks from Mosley for uh presenting to us tonight. And we look forward to what you what you develop on the master plan and look forward to seeing you at seventy-five percent. Do you have any idea when seventy-five percent is planned to be?
I don't think we have a set date, but our goal for.
Be in the late April, early May timeframe.
Okay.
And i- if I may, uh with regard to our questions there, I think we we had some good discussion with regard to the James Blair campus. Um that we see that the existing admin is not, i.e. the former James Blair School, is not the long-term solution for the school board. So can we rule that option out? Or does the school board still want us to investigate that? So I'm seeing some shaking heads.
So so rule, rule what option out of?
Well, the option of expansion and renovation of the existing admin building and annex meet the long-term twenty-year need for administration.
Yeah, we would not uh, we would, and I I don't, I think I speak for the board there, but we would not invest in um that facility for an administration um on the, in the long term. We we uh we built a third, two-thirds of a high school that we need, and so we're gonna the uh middle middle school that we need there. So we would, the the long-term plan from the school system's point of view is tearing that building down and using that to to expand James Blair versus administration.
Right.
Yeah. And uh tha- that building doesn't serve our administration very well, frankly. It's it's uh, we we've, we use it for administration, because it's a facility and it's uh it's there and and quote-unquote free, but uh we would, we would like to have them in a different facility.
Mr. Chairman, does the board have a master plan for that site at this point?
I, Mr. Snipes can answer that question, but I believe we we have a a vision for what that site's going to look like as a built-out school. Is that right, Mr. Snipes?
Yes, we do have a a plan for what that building would look like and where auditorium would now go as well as the cafeteria.
Excellent.
And if I could add to that, that involves tearing down both of the current buildings to build out the rest of the space and the parking for a normal-sized middle school.
And then with regard to school operations and the maintenance building, does the school board have any thoughts on that campus?
Um as far as whether that could be expanded or?
As far as the the answers to questions four, five, and six, geographically, does it meet your needs?
I I think I would defer that to Mr. Snipes. Uh, Mr. Snipes?
I think from a maintenance and custodial and child nutrition standpoint, yes, it does. Um from a transportation standpoint, because it's in the upper end of the county, it creates some issues. But um that's why we have depots, so we've we've created depots to kind of thwart that transportation issue.
That's the, that's the feedback we needed this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah, the the shape of our county creates creates many challenges. And and while that that maintenance facility is quote-unquote centrally located, it's far afield from both ends of our county. And so um that's, I think, where Mr. Snipes has come to develop the depot plan to 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 uh do some maintenance there. But uh uh yeah, there you go.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could just add, um, no, it it was no, never anyone's intention to use the current uh administration building for its the for the purpose it's being used for now. Um and so I think it would be ideal if this facilities' master plan could be the i- the ideal of what would be helpful to staff and um recognizing that we may not get it, because the land that we need may not be available in the location that we need it, right? So um but I do think we should be aware of what is best, what that what that ideal scenario is, recognizing that that ideal scenario may not be possible, because we don't generate our own revenue, cannot buy our own land, cannot build our own buildings. So uh with those restrictions in mind, be good to know what's good, but recognize that we may have to settle for something different based on available resources. Does that make sense?
It does, it makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Any other board member comments before we move on?
I I guess I just have a question for Mr. Snipes. Um uh having been out of that building, I can see that it's very, guys are very compact in in that building. Um you're kind of scrunched together. I mean, since that's what this this discussion is about, ideally, how much more space do you think you would need? I mean, I think I saw something up here about thirty percent or thirty-eight percent. And is there room there at that facility to do that?
Um, we, we have some transportation area that is very compact. They're in there together. Um and that would, that's probably where a lot of the request for additional space um requirements are. Uh, that lot has a, we what we call the back forty there at operations. Um so there is some space at the back of the lot that could be, I think he's bringing it up now, um an aerial. Um there is some space there at the back of the lot of that we could continue to use for buses and maybe expand a little bit.
And to answer your question about the space, so that thirty-eight percent was based on the current need versus how much space you currently have. So that was if the offices and space were sized based on all the positions they now have, it was thirty-eight percent. But if you look out in the twenty-thirty and twenty-forty needs, it it's even even further off.
Go back a couple of slides, Mr. Snipes, to make reference to the.
As you can see, the the aerial on the right, you can see where the operations building is located there at the front, closer to Jolly Pond. There's a set of buses and then we what we call the back forty. So um a lot of the buses could be moved further back, and we could probably expand to the rear or to the left where we have additional parking now. But I'll leave that up to the architects I didn't graduate from with Tony.
And and that's why we're here, Ms. Young. You you've identified exactly our goal. But we've identified from a numerical sense what the needs are for Mr. Snipes and his group. And we're now going to go and determine graphically and from a physical standpoint, what can be fit on that site and it be fit in the configuration that Mr. Snipe needs. Um and we will come back to you with that solution a- at a later meeting.
Okay, but I I can I, I'm sorry. So currently, Mr. Snipes, we, the build, from what I'm hearing, is that facility needs thirty-eight percent more room now?
Correct. Again, a lot of that is our transportation department is packed in there.
Right, and I've seen that. So so, Mr. Bell, my question is then, so when you come back with this master plan, are you going to tell us, I mean, you're you're forecasting what's going to be needed? Is is your plan going to forecast what you think will be needed in the future there?
We've, yes, ma'am, we've already determined what is needed. We've got that number for you. It's on the the next couple of slides that Adam was showing. So we, we know what. So we we know what your needs are. It's there on the last column for twenty-forty. The operations and maintenance needs forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine square feet. So our next step is determine how can we best configure the forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine square feet on that existing campus and provide the necessary parking and vehicular traffic pattern, vehicular circulation pattern on that site to optimize Mr. Snipes' efficiency productivity moving forward.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't see that because the my screen of participants was in front of it, but thank you very much for answering that question.
Okay.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Sean, and thank you for the folks from Mosley. I appreciate it, and we once again, we look forward to seeing what you have in April and May.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting us give a presentation.
Appreciate it. So that takes us to six point zero two fiscal year twenty-twenty-two operating budget discussion. Before we begin, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two school budget because my wife may be an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I may, I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I may be able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing and Mr. Baker are going to provide some additional information about the budget in response to some of your questions, the board's questions at the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing, and I think you are going to start.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This evening, we will briefly review the revenue and expenditure summary that was shared at the last budget workshop and provide information related to additional federal funding that has been allocated to us. Mr. Baker will then share additional health insurance information for your consideration. This chart summarizes the information shared at our budget workshops last month. Just as a reminder, this is a preliminary look at the governor's proposed budget and local government transfers. These revenue projections will likely change in the coming weeks. Total estimated revenue adjustments amount to six point five million, which includes an estimated increase from the localities of one point five percent. And total expenditure increases amount to seven point six million. This would result in an additional request for our funding partners of approximately one point two million.
Ms. Ewing? Is that, I just want to confirm that those increases are based on the current fiscal year budget, correct?
Correct.
Good thing.
The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, or CRRSA, was signed into law on December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Our allocation amounts to four point nine million. We will need to apply for these funds by April first, and they will expire in September twenty-twenty-three. Our original grant award from the CARES Act amounted to approximately one point one million. Those funds will expire in September of twenty-twenty-two and must be spent first. We will have funds remaining at the end of this fiscal year from the CARES grant that will be carried over into next fiscal year. We do need to keep in mind that any positions or expenditures that are ongoing and paid from these funds will need to be built into our operating budget once the grant funds expire. The overarching purpose of the CRRSA funds is to provide emergency relief funds to address the impact that COVID-nineteen has had and continues to have on elementary and secondary schools. Some of the areas we are proposing to spend the funds on include the following. In the area of mental health services and supports, an additional psychologist and four additional counselors to enable us to achieve a two hundred fifty to one student to counselor ratio. Adding an additional itinerant LPN to assist with contact tracing. Preliminary data suggests that learning loss is greater in math, so we plan to add a math support teacher at each elementary school. These funds will also be used for a more robust summer school program. We are currently assessing our needs in this area to plan for the upcoming summer. One of our health mitigation strategies revolves around social distancing, so we plan to use funding to support our additional space needs, specifically the trailers at James River and Norg. Mr. Baker will now review additional health insurance information with you.
Before we start this particular part, if there's any questions or thoughts on the first part, it may be good to get your your thoughts on that now. As you're aware, we added the additional trailers. They're currently in the proposed operating budget increases, that there is a possibility that we'll be able to use CARES Act funding to provide those spaces. And Mr. Walker currently is doing an analysis to see how much more space we would need if there was a need to socially distance in the fall to bring every student back onsite to learn five days a week, which, of course, is what we want to do and must do in the fall. Currently, we're going back to hybrid model pretty soon. That's required because of the number of students in each class and the size of our classrooms. And so that's, we don't want that to be an inhibiting factor in getting us back full-time.
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing, you mentioned, or, yeah, you mentioned the original CARES Act dollars that we received. Can you remind us exactly how much we received and maybe help us understand what is left over from those dollars, if any?
It was approximately one point one million that we are awarded this past summer, but if you'll recall, in October, November, we were awarded coronavirus relief funds that had a spending deadline of December thirty-first. So the funds, the expenditures we had used our CARES money for this fall, we transferred into those funds that had the earlier deadline. So right now, I would estimate we might have about five hundred thousand left at the end of this fiscal year out of our original CARES grant.
And were there stipulations on how those could be used? Sorry, I heard some feedback.
Yes.
And maybe if you, I assume you've got that information. If you don't, maybe you can just get that to me later, but I'm also curious, the new CRRSA dollars, are they similar stipulations or is there looser requirements?
No, they're they're similar stipulations to the original CARES money.
Okay.
And I can get that specific information to you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Elbe?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Dr. Heron, just going back to the information that you were giving us with regard to Mr. Walker looking at space needs in order for us to come back five days a week in the fall. Is he looking at pre-K through twelfth grade space needs, and when will we have that information?
We're starting to look at it. We're looking at elementary first. And I'm not sure of the deadline, but obviously, as we work towards this, the spending of these funds is over a period of two years, but to have the process to add space, to add a trailer takes a significant portion of time. And so if we were to start to look at that, we'd need to certainly at the elementary level at least be doing that as soon as possible because there's a timeframe involved.
And then this is probably just speculation. I know we don't have a crystal ball, but I know all of us want to to be back five days a week, looking like back to normal. Do we think that there'll be an expectation that CDC will still require the three-feet separation?
We don't know. I would hope we'll be a lot further on with vaccinations and everything else, but I don't have a crystal ball on that one. And I do, our intention and our need is to be back five days a week with every single student.
Thank you, Dr. Heron.
Any other board members, comments, questions? Ignoring Mrs. Cook?
Well, I I do have a question. I mean, right now, the social distancing is the six feet, but children, I mean, from the research that I'm seeing, is children don't pass the virus. So if our teachers are vaccinated, why does, do we still need to maintain the six feet? I mean, they're the problem, I I let me not, let me rephrase that. They're not the problem. But we want to make sure that our teachers are safe. But if children don't transmit COVID and our teachers are vaccinated, why would we still need that six feet for social distancing?
I am hopeful that we could consider between three and six feet as we move safely, step by step along. The gold standard is six feet still.
Mr. Chair?
I was gonna go to Ms. Cook first before I went back to you, Ms. Elbe.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Ms. Elbe asked with regard to the number of trailers that would be needed to socially distance appropriately and what we can, you know, estimate will be the standard in in the fall, you know, because since those are, as Ms. Ewing said, funds that we would have to eventually build in, who would spend on ongoing costs, it seems to me that diverting them to one-time expenditures might be, at least part of them to one-time expenditures might be a wise use. And and we know we, we know our schools are overcrowded anyway. I I don't love the idea of learning cottages, but if we can use that money to buy more of them to allow for smaller classrooms sizes so that we can socially distance and and, you know, because we did hear from a lot of parents, and and I think we're all anxious in the fall to get back to a more normal schedule to the extent possible, and if more space buys us that opportunity, I'd like to at least explore that. And then the other thing is, you know, and we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but as we start adding positions, it's a kind of a dizzying amount of sources of money, and and there's going to be another stimulus package adopted soon, and so it's going to layer on, I'm sure. So moving forward, the positions that we're adding and the ongoing expense for that matter, if we could, again, kind of have the some sort of chart where it was what we adopted last year, what we actually had last year, and then we're proposing, so we can just kind of get a sense of what we're actually adding compared to the current fiscal year and what we actually requested last year. We talked about that, but it would be helpful to to see that, particularly for new positions and ongoing expenses.
Ms. Elbe?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify comment, Mrs. Mrs. Young. So right now, even in our hybrid model, our our students are not six feet apart, which is the gold standard. They're they're three feet apart. Is that correct, Dr. Heron?
In our elementary schools, they are six feet apart to the extent possible. I wouldn't say it's exact in every school, but yes, it is six, it it's built out in every classroom, unmeasured to to six feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from board members before we continue?
Uh, yeah, Jim, sorry, I'll get that out of there. I just want to clarify something because I I heard Mrs. Young say that kids can't transmit COVID-nineteen. And they actually can. So I I it's not just adults who transmit COVID-nineteen. Children also can transmit COVID-nineteen. And then, and and I think that really points to the need to really consider, continue to consider that six foot, six feet self-disaster, you know, unless unless things really change or but what I, but what I've seen and heard and the CDC says that even children who have no symptoms can still transmit the disease, can still transmit the virus, so I I just, I don't want to forget that. That's all, Jim. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Biers. Any other comments from board members before we continue to Mr. Baker? Mr. Baker, I think you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. At our last meeting, we shared with you an estimate of a five percent increase to our healthcare cost with an eighty percent, with eighty percent of that increase being absorbed by our employees. Tonight, we'll look at scenarios with a hundred percent of the increase is passed on to our employees in relation to a potential salary increase. And please know, we still do not have our final, do not have the the numbers in for our healthcare costs, so right now, we're using a five percent estimate, and but we do not have the final numbers in. On this slide, we suppose a two point five percent raise. For a beginning teacher, that equals one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars per year. A church, a teacher currently earning fifty thousand dollars a year sees an annual increase of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. As you can see, the healthcare increases for teachers with a family plan exceeds the annual amount of their raise. This shows an example of a two point five percent raise for a custodial staff with the entire health insurance increase absorbed by the employee. As you can see, the cost of the insurance increase exceeds the annual raise for staff choosing employee plus spouse and the employee plus family coverage for both the two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollar, five hundred dollar deductible plans. The next two slides are the same scenarios, this time with a three percent raise. As you can see, with a three percent raise, the annual salary adjustment is greater than the increase in health insurance costs for both the beginning teacher and a teacher earning fifty thousand dollars a year. This slide shows a three percent raise for custodians at the beginning and the midpoint of the pay scale. I showed you this slide at the last budget work session. As a reminder, this is what the division pays annually to provide health insurance for employees on various plans. Based on the number of employees who have health coverage through Williamsburg James City County Public Schools, the division will pay more than eighteen million dollars of the total twenty-two point seven million dollar cost next fiscal year. Collectively, the employees will be paying the remaining four million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. At the last meeting, we talked a bit about spousal surcharge to provide health insurance coverage for our employees' spouses. I mentioned that many public companies and even some school divisions and government agencies do not provide coverage for spouses. Those that do will often have a surcharge or increased cost. This chart shows the monthly cost difference for employee plus one and employee plus spouse plans of nearby school divisions. WJCC schools has a fifty-dollar monthly surcharge to add a spouse, which is lower than the cost shown on this slide. This surcharge impacts less than half of our employees who have health insurance coverage with WJCC, five hundred eighty-one out of the one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven, to be exact. This equates to three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars a year.
And Tim, we charge that for family as well, right?
Sorry?
So this is, you have cost difference here, employee plus one and employee plus spouse, but then we charge that for employee plus family, right?
Well, we, the family coverage is even even more correct. This is the difference if you're if your one is a spouse versus if your one's a child.
Correct.
Here you'll see options for increasing the spousal surcharge so that we are more in line with our neighboring school divisions. The potential cost savings reflected assumes that every employee currently covering a spouse would continue to do so. If we increase the amount that employees pay for spousal's coverage, these then these funds could be used in the share of an overall cost increase of health insurance or support a salary increase for all employees.
Mr. Chair? Let me ask a question really quick.
Sure.
Mr. Baker, just to clarify again what Herr said, so we
we, we, there's a surcharge or a fee for an employee plus a spouse. But is there one for a family or is there an additional surcharge for family?
No, it's like, so right now for our coverage choices, you can have an employee plus, you can have employee only, you can have employee plus a child, just, just one. Or you can have an employee plus a spouse. And the difference between the employee plus the child and employee plus the spouse is, is $50. It's just one additional person. But if you, if it's your spouse, the, the difference is $50 increase versus employee plus the child. And then the family plan is you could have a whole slew of folks on the family plan.
And that surcharge, the surcharge for a spouse is if your spouse could have access to health insurance somewhere else.
No, we just charge, it's just, it's just for spouse.
Okay.
I had a, yeah, I have a question. So employee, at, at this point, if we go to the 150, which would be on par with York, the employee would just have to make a decision, right? Like, okay, if my spouse takes his or her own insurance with his company or her company, then they just have to weigh the difference on what's a better deal for the, the cost difference, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I, I think the 150 sounds, sounds great. If we're doing a, a parity, like so many things that we do, we try to see how do we stack up against our neighboring schools. And if we're at 150, then we're on par with York. And then we can perhaps make a difference with the increase in salaries for, for our, our teachers. So that's just my, my two cents.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess I'm, I'm really struggling with this being called a surcharge at all. I just think it's an adjustment. Just throw that out there, um, for employee plus one and, and just for employees that are spouses that work, both of them whom work in our division, this would not apply, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, so I have, what about the idea of adjusting the salaries at the, for our, the, the positions, the custodian, for instance? Did you look at that, adjusting those, uh, those salaries so that the, that's just another way to potentially get at this, right? If we know that those are not, you know, not, they're low-wage employees, can we just boost those salaries so that the scenario that you showed us on the slide where in the 3% raise, they're still potentially negatively impacted with the family plan for both the 500 and the 250, can we not adjust their salaries for custodians and cafeteria workers, et cetera?
I think when the study of all of our salaries was done, the compensation study two, three years ago, every single position was looked at, market analysis, what the same position was being paid in other divisions. And at that point, those that were out of line, we actually added a significant increase, I believe, Mr. Baker, to several positions. I don't know if you have any of that on the top of your head.
I know we moved the, the bus drivers in a whole gray, but I can get back to if we moved any other ones a whole gray.
Yeah, I mean, my recollection is we, as soon as we did that for the bus drivers, WADA gave a raise right after us. So it seems to me that we're always chasing. And so anyway, it, it just seems to me that's another option as well.
So, Mr. Baker, the, the, the surcharge that York County charges for their, for the spouses, if it's, if it's an employee plus family and one of those happens to be a spouse, do they still charge 120 surcharge?
I don't believe so. I think it's, I think it's just the difference between adding a, a singleton.
Okay.
If, if that's a, a, a child versus a spouse.
But, but we do charge it.
Not for the family. We, we charge, our family plans more, I mean, because you're adding.
Maybe you should, maybe you should look at Renee shaking her head. Ms. Young?
Yes, if, if an employee is covering, if it's an employee plus their children, then it's one rate. But if they're also covering their spouse on a family plan,
Oh, I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
the employee does pay $50 more.
Ms. Young, did you have your hand up? I got you, Greg. You're muted, Sandy. Sandy, you're muted.
No, I, I was just saying that I'm confused. So, so if, if employee has the family plan, that, does that include spouse and children?
Yes, ma'am. The way, and way Ms. Young said, correct. It's like right now, like our family plan, uh, is the, the person for the $250 deductible plan, they're paying $536 out of their pocket for the family plan. And if they had just their children, it's 486. So it is $50 more if your family includes a spouse for the deductible, the $200 for both plans.
Are you good, Sandy?
I, I guess so. So an employee plus the spouse, there's always a surcharge, even if they have the family plan. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dell? You're still muted.
Spacebar failed me. Mr. Baker, my question, just for my own clarity, it might make sense to everybody else, but these percentages of, percentages of raises, two and a half percent or three, is that including the raise that staff did get back in November, December? Is that actually a, on the 3%, is that a four and a half or is that three including that 1.5?
It's, it's a 2% raise where they currently are, which is already has the 1.5.
So it's 2%, it's 3% on top of the two. So it'll be five that they've seen in. Does my question make sense?
Correct. They got it in the mid-year, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be in addition to that. It's not, that it's not, it's an addition.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, I, I just think that, um, you know, the, the, I'm not sure how I feel about, uh, charging spouses more, particularly when the spouse doesn't have an option for healthcare. That, that troubles me. I, I get the point of spouses who do have options, uh, using, coming to our plan, uh, because it's better that, you know, is, is frustrating sometimes, uh, how much that costs us. But, um, I guess I, I still want to look at that balance between how much we're putting into salary versus benefits. I think we're out of whack there. And so I do support holding steady, even though I'm troubled by the impact that it has on our lowest-paid workers, which is why I'd rather look at their salaries. Um, because I believe they're underpaid anyway. Um, even with a market study, um, it's expensive to live here. Uh, we know that. And so I think we should do better by our lower-paid employees. Um, but if we look at, um, the analysis that we, we saw from Ms. Ewing about the balance, I, I think we are overpaying for, um, for benefits. And then a couple of months ago, I asked about comparing our division to other divisions on the peninsula by object category, um, which is, I think, a state classification. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ewing. But, you know, we pay 25, 27% of our budget in, in benefits and the, and the average is 25%, right? And so by, by object category. So we're still, whether you look at it the way that Ms. Ewing shared with us most recently or by object category, um, we're just, we're, we're paying a lot comparatively in benefits. And I just think we need to adjust that over time. It's not going to happen overnight. But I think we have to stay held steady and that's not going to be paying free because eventually health insurance costs are going to hap, we're going to have a bigger than a 5% bump. In the, in the past, we've had, you know, double-digit bumps. And so when that happens, I think we need to hold steady so that we're putting more money into salary because that goes farther in people's pockets. And they do have a choice to do the 200, the 500 key advantage plan if they're on the 250, for instance. And so there's a, there's a place for them to go. And I think we're overly invested in benefits and I think we need to hold steady.
Dr. Beers?
Um, yeah, I, I, just to add to the confusion, I want to make sure because Ms. Cook said something that made me think about this is, um, Mr. Baker, when, um, are these surcharges added because we know the spouse or the significant other has a job that has health insurance? That isn't how we base it.
No, ours is just straight if it's a spouse.
It's, it's like, okay, if, and there's no, there isn't a surcharge if it's just a spouse.
There, there's a 50, currently there's a $50 surcharge if you add your spouse.
Okay, even if she's not working?
Correct. Even if, if the, the spouse is not working, if, if it's a spouse.
Right.
It's, it's, it's $50.
Because I, I, because part of what I started thinking about, and I, and I think what Ms. Cook said is, it's absolutely right. We, we, um, we have to, we, we do have to realign and, and we have to, and we're going to make adjustments um, that are more aligned with some of the other school divisions. And I think partly because, um, these plans are really good um, compared to some of the other ones. So I, um, I, 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 and I know it's painful and, and I know, you know, people aren't going to like it. But, um, especially with folks um, who are, who do have, um, jobs, um, where their employee does have, does carry, um, health insurance coverage, that we need to adjust that, um, whatever you want to call it, fee. I'm, and, and I, I think it needs to be adjusted gradually. But up to a point where, um, as somebody else said, where, where, um, uh, an employee and, um, and, 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 you know, another member of the family is working in another, another place who does have the, the capacity to get the, um, insurance, that those numbers start to get closer so that they have to make a decision. Um, it's, we go ahead and pay the higher fee. But if the fees continue to go up, it might be smarter for us if, say, I'm the spouse. If I get my own insurance from that company and you get your own insurance from the, uh, uh, you know, from the school system, there is no fee for kids. Right?
No, if, there's, there's a different race if you're having yourself.
No, no, I, 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 I understand that. But, um, um, I, I, but I guess the part that we're, I get, you know, I, I guess I am uncomfortable with, with one of those. And, and I, you know, I know most wives and moms work. But for those who don't, who don't have that, um, ability to get group insurance because of, you know, from their employer, um, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with continuing to bump that up simply because um, they're the spouse of the employee. You know, I just, I'm just throwing that out. I, I don't know. I don't, there's probably not an honor system. If we can't go around, you probably could. You could at least ask employees. Um, but I, I don't know what kind of response you'd get.
I think part of the challenge, uh, when we did this last time, Dr. Beers, was if you did go out and ask the, it wasn't a good way to get an answer. So it was easier to treat everyone the same rather than differentiate between those who had another insurance and those who didn't. Because the liability to the division for an extra adult on the insurance was actually the same.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. That's helpful. I, um, but I do, uh, but I do, and, you know, and I would say do it incrementally. But, um, because that's what's happening to so many other things is, um, that you just could, you know, you start, start to bump it up. Um, I mean, that's what I would support rather than a sudden, you know, $150 jump. Going from, I don't know, 50 to 75 to 100 to 125. Um, more gradual. I'm, I'm thinking it might be a little less painful doing it that, that way. Anyway, that's my two cents. What are my 50 cents worth?
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to say that I, hearing all the discussion around, uh, surcharges has been good for me. It's brought some, some clarity to this part of the, the healthcare program that we offer. I, I would agree with Dr. Beers. Um, I think an incremental approach to increasing that surcharge would be appropriate. However, uh, I would also say that I, I would not be in favor of doing it this year in this budget cycle um, on the heels of a pandemic. We heard from a, a mother that, uh, spoke passionately and, and firmly about her family and, and the issues that her family has faced in this pandemic, that the mental toll that has taken on her son. And that's a member of our public, the same can be said and should be recognized for our, our teachers and their families. And I wouldn't want to, I just wouldn't be in favor of, um, entertaining the idea that a, a spouse could or should go out there and look for another healthcare program uh, during the, during the pandemic. So that, that's just where, where I kind of lay out on this, uh, this conversation.
Any other board members?
Yeah, I'll add just, just another thought, uh, aligning with that, that I think that, okay, if we don't go up to the full 150, I still think it's valuable to do, to work the numbers because if more people in the school division are helped with a pay increase, a salary increase, because we're taking money that a smaller percentage of people, in, in my mind, the lack of, of an adequate surcharge is, is impacting our ability to provide a raise for a greater number of people. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's not coming from a, a position of, of, of being hard on the people who are, who currently have spouses that are covered and only paying $50 when our next-door neighbors are paying $150. I'm looking at it more of the big amount of money that could be paid instead in, in raises for teachers. So that's it.
Ms. Ombe?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to make it clear that I am in support of Ms. Cook and, and also what, what Ms. Hummel said, um, recognizing that we are in a pandemic. But we began this process, uh, two years ago, um, trying to, to look at the, the amount of money spent on, um, benefits versus salaries. So at the end of the day, I think we need to look at salaries. I recognize it is a burden to ask employees to pay more for health insurance. But if we, we do need to shift and, and increase the, the dollars that are in, in people's pockets. So I don't think we can stop this process that we just began. Even though we're in a pandemic, we, we do need to continue to, to move forward, bringing balance with benefits versus salaries. Thanks.
Zoom malfunction. Any other comments, uh, from board members? Are we ready to move on to the next agenda item?
Um, yes, sir. Um, I do, um, just wanted to get some sense of where the board would lean. We do have, and the information presented prior to tonight, we had made the, the bonus into a 2% raise that because we believe that's probably what the governor will put in his budget. If, I'm trying to get a sense of the leaning of the board as to whether we put more emphasis on salary or we stay at that 2%. Just to get a general sense of where everyone is so that when we bring back and recommend a budget that we have taken your thinking fully into consideration.
So the, your, your question is?
So the, your, your question is, do we, what specifically is your question, Dr. Herron?
Do we stick with the two percent or do we think about two and a half? Or do we think about three percent to try to counterbalance the benefits? Knowing that there's a lot of other divisions that have come out with a raise that is happening now in this school year. I think Hapless has given their people two percent. So they're actually a half percent ahead of us in this current year before they go into two percent next year. So a lot of school divisions are beginning to do this right now. And then, then the governor's two percent must be in next fiscal year. So if we just do that, we'll be still the same as everyone else. And our goal ultimately is to move the trajectory upwards in terms of, of salary. And I just wanted to sense where you are, two, two and a half, three percent, or whatever.
Well, depending upon affordability, I'd like three percent, but I don't know how those, how those numbers work, work in relation to revenue. Other board members?
I like, I like three percent. I like making some progress on charging a little bit more for employee plus spouse. And then if there's any way to take the money that you showed us, you know, the cost savings and somehow add a little bit to our lowest paid employees, so that they are not harmed by, if they have a family plan, that's, that's what I would love to see.
I agree with Ms. Cook.
Julie.
I agree with Ms. Cook, and I, I would say if we can go with three percent so that the vast majority aren't going to see their paycheck cut, and then move forward with this idea of looking at our benefits versus our salaries and realizing that we need to get more in alignment with salaries versus benefits, so that people can, can choose what they want to do with their take home dollars, increase their take home dollars.
Yeah.
Same.
I, I agree with what's been said. It troubles me when I look at the amount of money that we, I mean, it is a benefit that we support families. I mean, it's a great benefit, but, I mean, health benefits are just going to increase. We need to take a hard look at that, and I do support a raise in the, an incremental, if it needs to be, to the surcharge, I didn't, what was the word you called it, Kira, it wasn't surcharge, because I don't like that word either. But because if you are a family, you want everybody covered, I understand that. But we also have to be cognizant of how much it's costing us as a school division. And I would, I do support the three percent also.
Mr. Dell. Yeah, so Dr. Herron's question to the board is really what I was asking, a piece of the question that I was asking earlier, whether that two and a half or that three is a part of that two that we saw in the mid-year. Because if I remember that conversation accurately, we were looking at that two percent that they got at the mid-year as a piece of a larger pie, a larger four percent that would come during this budget cycle that we're discussing here now. So all that to say, yeah, three percent would be fantastic. I would like to see what those numbers look like first. And I think when we always, when we talk about this, that extra percent is another million dollars. Is that essentially what, what we get to when we talk about an extra percent, an extra million dollars? So what that actually looked like within the budget, you know, if that's feasible, I'd like to see that. Again, I'm not opposed to ever doing incremental raises, raising of the surcharge. Again, I think that, and I see the point, Julie, that you make. I'm just concerned, and it's not a hill for me to die on by any means, but just concerned about doing that during a pandemic when, you know, we've got families going to the doctor seeking medical care far more than they ever have in their lives. So that's where I come from. But like I said, not a hill to die on, just wanted to express that, that point of view. Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I, I agree with the three percent. And, and I, I do, but, and as I said before, I do support that incremental, an incremental increase in, in health coverage. And, you know, I probably look at, I, I don't like surcharge either. I'm thinking, really, it's more of a, it's more of a premium adjustment. You know, you're, you're, you're tying it into the premium that they pay, and this is an additional premium if you want to have this. And just, but, but, and, and, you know, and raise it up, but try to do it gradually if you can. One other thing, and I, just a question, because I want to make sure I have this straight. This, if we say three percent, that's based on our budget, correct? That would be based on our budget, that wouldn't include money that might come in, additional money that might come in from the state? Or is going to come in from the state, or the governor said, you know, one and, one and a half percent, whatever. That always confuses people, and not to sound like I'm confused, but I just wanted to know if, how that fits in there.
There, there's a lot of discussion at the state level. Obviously, we believe, most people believe that there will be a two percent raise that should make it through the General Assembly. But again, it's, it's not there yet, it's still an unknown. We may have to adjust if that doesn't come through. I know there's also a bill moving through that would offer teachers more of a raise, more in the line of three or four percent. But we don't know what traction that will have in the.
Whatever it comes out to, you know, whatever they, you know, when the dust settles and whatever that percentage is, will that be put on top of the three percent that we have included in our budget?
No, we're, our three percent would be that extra, that would be included in it. We wouldn't, it wouldn't be on top, our budget's been built right now on two percent because we believe it's coming for SOQ.
Oh, right, okay, okay.
And so the board is saying, put it up one more to get, to get us a little bit ahead.
All right.
And that two percent's only for SOQ positions.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that, that that's cleared everyone, everyone else out there. It's not, well, there's three percent, and then if the governor just, percent and a half, then that's going to be four and a half percent, and it's not.
And also, and also governed by the composite index as well. So, so like, it's, it's a, it's a two percent minus minus. So are we, if, are we good there? We can move on to next agenda item?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, great. Six point oh three, return to learn for WJCC schools 2020-2021, Dr. Herron.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I want to posit right to Mr. Keever this evening to lead us off on a reasonably brief return to learn presentation this evening.
Good evening, school members and Dr. Herron. This evening, on behalf of the senior leadership team, Dr. Warley and I will be updating the board on several key items Williamsburg-Jame City County schools relative to return to learn. Our presentation this evening will focus on four key areas. A review of our WJCC COVID dashboard to include some updated information on the vaccination process for our employees. We're going to share some key health metrics and data related to our decision-making process. We're going to update the board on the work done to date by our health safety teams, which we've mentioned previously. And we'll conclude our presentation this evening where Dr. Warley is going to offer key information related to VHSL fall sports seasons. As we described in the January nineteenth meeting, the Virginia Department of Ed and Virginia Department of Health offered revised interim guidance on school reopening. The guiding principles for this was focused or were focused on supporting in-person learning, prioritizing young learners, putting education first, focusing on the mitigation and prevention, considering the needs of the community and using a flexible and innovative approach to help expedite the process. There are five specific steps outlined in the document, and through our work as a leadership team with building leaders and with various stakeholder groups, we feel confident that we are taking the key and necessary steps forward with our plan to welcome groups of students back to our classrooms, beginning on the sixteenth of February. Our COVID dashboard, accessible through the school division website, continues to evolve as we seek additional methods to offer our community a clear and transparent picture of our operations. As of this week, eight students have tested positive for COVID, and there are three staff members in isolation, as well as thirty-seven staff members in quarantine. Additionally, as of twelve forty-five on the first of February, we had been able to offer the first vaccine dose to one thousand two hundred and seventy-five of our employees. So the board is aware nearly two hundred are scheduled to be vaccinated on Wednesday, and we anticipate at least another one hundred will be vaccinated on Friday. Our partnership with James City County and the city of Williamsburg officials has been strong, and we are indebted to them for helping us ensure all staff who want the vaccine will have that access. While there will always be challenges with processes like mass vaccinations, the collaborative spirit and focus has been nothing short of excellent. There have been a host of WJCC staff who've stepped forward to assist in our process in this public, and in this public setting. I want to just quickly offer my sincere appreciation and thanks for their service-oriented work. Our school nursing team has been incredible, as has and have Janice Fowler, Stephanie Boudreaux, Emily Carroll, Tim Baker, Eileen Cox, Christie Scott, and Ronnie Shoah. They all deserve our appreciation and going above and beyond to put us in the position that we're in and continuing to move forward. On the next slide, I want to share with you again data that is on our core indicators page on our dashboard. You will note that today, February second, James City County is at eight eighty-four point nine with a ten point nine percent positivity rate. Williamsburg is back in the higher category from the highest category at one sixty-one point one, the twenty percent positivity rate. We've also included on our dashboard this graphic. It's a graphic that we referenced just briefly in our meeting on the nineteenth, but it's a graphic in the Virginia Department of Education, Virginia Department of Health decision matrix, decision-making matrix relative to what the mitigation looks like within a division, what the community spread looks like within a division, and how best to prioritize making those decisions. So this has been included on our dashboard for our community to see what some of the different markers are. As of today, this is the individual metrics and burden trend for the eastern region. We've shared this with the board over the course of the last several months. Cases have been decreasing in the eastern region for thirteen days. When it gets to the fourteenth day tomorrow, that trend will be considered to be decreasing. Right now, that trend is considered fluctuating, and percent positivity has been decreasing for twenty-five days. So that trend is considered to be decreasing as well. Here's a fourteen-day incidence map for COVID. This is the first time in the last several weeks that we've started to see some orange come back into the Commonwealth. If you look really closely within that blue circle, you'll see that Williamsburg is orange as well. So I believe that there are three orange areas on the map. I promise you that Williamsburg is orange at one sixty-one. This is probably a little difficult to read, but it's a, it's a ten-day look at our data relative to the, the key metrics and the secondary indicators. And if you really squint, you'll be able to determine that our numbers went pretty high towards the latter part of the month of January. But we are beginning to see a slight downward trend in both case incidents and percent positivity in James City County. And then in the far right-hand column, though it is a secondary indicator, but that is the percent change in new cases during the last seven days versus the previous seven days. When that number is in the negative numbers and green, that is a positive indicator relative to decline and, and spread. So right now, we feel particularly good about that as well. One of the things that we've talked about in the last month or so is working to develop a culture of safety. And we outlined three things for the board that come into that development of a culture of safety. Last meeting, we heard from members of our health advisory committee, and that's one of the different pieces for us. Another piece in terms of developing and re-establishing that culture of safety is around mitigation training. And then the third piece would be around our safety teams. We have, at the beginning of the school year, shared with staff detailed training on the school division's mitigation guidelines. And to support that culture of safety that I just referenced, a mitigation presentation was created and provided to all building leaders to, again, use with staff as we position to bring students back. Presentation's very targeted on what the research tells us and what mitigation looks like. And it can really be best summarized by the last two slides in that presentation. It takes all of us to mask up, wash up, back up, of course, at least six feet, clean up, and then speak up when necessary. I referenced for the board in our January nineteenth meeting, the idea of the development of safety teams and utilization of those safety teams to help us visit campuses. Those teams have been established, team members represent custodial services and student services. Teams visit their identified schools on a weekly basis and submit specific data, data points relative to the mitigation indicators to building leaders and also share that with us centrally. Wanted to give you a sense of what those look fours were. Those look fours include, on the next slide, they include signage throughout the building and on the floor. It includes correct mask use at a hundred percent for everybody that those safety teams encounter. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible, soap and hand sanitizer being readily accessible, and then cleaning protocols being followed by our custodial staff. Here are two just quick pictures that the safety teams picked up as they were visiting. On the left, you will see a group of five staff members conducting a meeting. They have masks on, they are in a hallway, they are appropriately distanced, yet they're still interacting with one another and getting business accomplished. And then on the right, we have been really impressed and proud of our teachers who are really focused on the fact that it's okay, or no problema, or problema, or something of that mix, to wear a mask. And these are the kinds of things that we want to encourage our staff and let our community know that we're focused on as we bring students back to in-person learning on the sixteenth. In making that shift, it's also important for our board to be aware of conversations around fall sports and participation with Virginia High School league activities. And I would like to turn it over to Dr. Warley for that.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Herron, and members of the board. Tonight, I will bring you an update on athletics as we begin our move to path three for secondary students. The current slide shows our conditioning dates for fall and spring sports. We did resume athletic conditioning on January eighteenth for our fall athletes. And conditioning for spring sports will begin on February twenty-second for all three high schools. With path three blended learning, our students transition to an onsite, in-person learning with smaller groups, and this includes participation in athletics and activities. The chart on this slide outlines the timeline for starting practice and competition for fall sports. You will notice that the football and competition tiers start at practice a few weeks earlier, as there is a VHSL requirement that those teams have a specific number of practices prior to the beginning of the season. Our plan is one that focuses on the opportunity for students to transition back to high school athletics with safety as our top priority, and a plan that is in line with our path three on return to learn plan. We made a few adjustments to our timeline to start that lines with our division return to learn. We took into consideration many strategies to promote safety for student athletes. Moving forward, it is important to note, there will be limitations. This will not look or feel like a regular fall season, and it will not resemble the practices of travel or club teams that some students may or may not participate in. However, it will be a plan that allows our students to return to athletics and a progression we can support as a division. The wellness of our student athletes and coaches is paramount. As a part of safety mitigation with numbers, our students will not participate in junior varsity or middle school fall sport seasons. However, they may have the opportunity to continue conditioning and take in part in spring sports. The phased return to play mirrors the division's return to in-person learning plans, which brings students onsite in smaller groups. which brings students onsite in smaller groups. How will student athletes take part in athletics as safely as possible? Well, let's hear from our high school athletic directors.
The unique thing about fall sports is not only are a number of the sports outdoors, but we also have updated information on the positivity rates, updated information on CDC and Virginia Department of Health guidelines, not to mention some reports that have come out regarding the transmission during high school athletics and how it can be safe to play if you have proper mitigation standards in place. And thankfully, I know I speak for the other two athletic directors as well. We're very, very thankful that WJCC Schools has worked so hard to provide us with the proper mitigation standards that will help to keep our student athletes and coaches safe.
There's a definite plan for from check-in to checkout where the students have to follow the mitigation guidelines. And some of those being, they will check in and ask the, be asked the symptom checker tool questions, and then they, you know, any student who has a temperature will not be allowed to work out that day. We also will keep students six feet apart at all times, and while they're engaged in activity, they will, they will be ten feet apart. And the coaches and student athletes will be wearing masks in the outside setting the entire time unless they have a helmet on, which includes ball and the field hockey goalies. So we're trying to keep the students as safe as possible, and we're doing it, trying to do it the right way, and all these mitigation strategies will be followed the entire time while the students are on campus.
Obviously, we're gonna, our division's gonna continue to watch the local COVID-nineteen transmission rates. And with that, we're gonna keep an eye on all our staff, our students, and how well they're adjusting and how well they're following through with the mitigations of wearing face coverings, the continuation throughout practices with cleaning equipment, sanitizing equipment, and obviously, you know, keeping players six feet apart. We, you know, as athletics, we're a team, so we're gonna work together as a collective group to make sure we can go forward with this. But we're gonna continue to watch it very closely, and if we're having issues with following the mitigations, and if we ever have cases, there's a very good chance we're gonna shut down the season, a team, and so forth. And the bottom line is, we want everybody safe, so, you know, we'll take all that consideration as we move through the season.
Our athletic directors are a key component of supporting the opportunity for our students to engage in athletic competition. They have outlined division expectations and guidelines for each sport that include recommendations from Virginia High School League. Their commitment to safety while providing opportunity is clear. Just to review, students will follow a check-in process as they do for conditioning for practice and games. There will be no shared personal equipment. Team equipment will be sanitized daily. Students will bring their own water bottles and towels, and locker rooms will not be used. Hand sanitizing stations will be located on fields. Students will work out and practice in pods to the greatest extent possible. Student athletes will wear masks at all times, except if they are wearing a helmet. This includes to and from practice, during practice, and during competition. Coaches and staff will wear masks at all times. Athletic directors and coaches collaborate on specific practice and game plans that include social distancing on sidelines at a remaining six to ten feet apart when students are not competing. An important part of keeping our staff and student athletes safe is by keeping the number of people congregating in one area or field or building limited to who we need to successfully allow students to compete. Therefore, we will not have spectators at our events at this time, and students compete with teams in the Bay Rivers District only. However, we are currently installing cameras to livestream our games from the main gym at each high school, Warner Stadium, and Cooley Field. Your school athletic director will share information with families and community members about accessing that subscription. Speaking of families, our partnership with our families and the commitment of our student athletes is a key ingredient to keeping everyone safe. To help reduce the number of potentially ill people in our buildings and in athletic practice and competition, staff and students will continue to conduct the daily symptom checks. In addition, coaches will take temperatures at the beginning of practice and games, and students with a temperature of a hundred degrees or higher will be sent home, and the school nurse will be notified. The nurse will reach out to families about next steps. Students are encouraged to remember if they have a temperature or answer yes to any of the questions on our symptom checker, they should stay home, and they're encouraged to contact their healthcare provider. Additionally, each student will submit the COVID-nineteen waiver release to the athletic director at the beginning of each season. This form acknowledges potential risk as students are not able to remain socially distant at all times when competing in athletic events. Again, this season will not look like an ordinary fall season, and we may experience challenges that require us to cancel games and possibly put entire teams in quarantine. We will continue to refer to our guidelines and the waiver as we make decisions that are in the best interest of our students and the school community. As a division, we are committed to supporting this work while keeping our students and staff safe. Our teachers, our school leaders are currently for opportunities for students to reengage in all activities in a safe manner as we move back to campus. We are excited to welcome our students back to school and the athletic field. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
That concludes our presentation this evening. We'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keever, Dr. Worley. Any questions or comments from board members? Sandy, Ms. Young?
Thank you. Mr. Keever, I, when you reported that the cases right now in James City County are eight hundred and eighty-four point nine, do we have the demographics of that, of how that is broken down by age?
I don't have that information in front of me, Ms. Young. Some of that information is available via the Virginia Department of Health website, and I think you can drill into some of that. I don't have that in front of me, though.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Elby?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley, can you give us an update on related arts and other after-school activities and if and when and how they will resume?
Sure, we're talking with teachers. In fact, I have a meeting with some of our performing arts teachers this week. They're planning and talking about looking at guidelines about what we can do safely and looking for opportunities to give all of our students. As I mentioned at the end, we believe that our activities, opportunities for former importance. So we'll be collaborating on what that looks like, what is safe, and how quickly we can get all that incorporated.
Thank you, Dr. Worley.
You're welcome.
Other board members? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the sharing the data about community transmission. It's still very, very high, but I'm glad it's moving in the right direction. I just think we can't lose sight of of that fact, really, that it is still very high, and I appreciate your commitment to data-driven decisions, Dr. Heron, and on your team, and to, you know, putting the safety of everybody first. I also want to thank the county and the city for their, their work with you to get our staff vaccinated. I know they've done a tremendous amount of work. I have a handful of questions. The first has to do with return to learn dates. We have heard at our last meeting, there was a change announced, and then we did hear from public comment today about concerns for, of sort of a moving goalpost. So could you speak to your thoughts around the dates that you've shared today and whether you think that they'll stick or not? And then also, if you could build on that, you mentioned a little earlier today, your thoughts on the fall. If you could just talk about sort of the future, we've been hearing from a lot of parents about not only this return to learn date, but then also moving forward into next fall. Could you just share your thoughts on that, please?
Currently, we're very confident that we will be able to speak with the dates that are currently advertised. As you mentioned, Ms. Cook, quite rightly, we are, the data has been decreasing every day now for about six days. And thank you for putting the timeline up again. And so with that, and the first vaccination of every staff member who wishes to have a vaccination, I think all play into the fact that we're moving ahead and look forward to having our students back in school.
Yeah, so heretofore, we've really cautioned at every meeting, really since March. It's gonna change, it's dynamic, but I think I hear that's starting to change. Would you say that that's a fair, that instead of etched in yellow, it might be etched in something a little bit more?
I think as we've all said all along, the vaccine doesn't drive the timeline, but it is a game changer in terms of the comfort level of staff and the safety of staff. And that process has started and is well underway. And also, the evolving research plays into this decision as well, and now very clear evidence of minor levels of transmission within schools if mitigation efforts are strong. We believe with our teams, with our retraining and mitigation, with all of the structures we have in place, that we can come to school safely, and we plan to make our current timeline.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I'd like to echo some of these comments or questions about other extracurricular. I appreciate the update on athletics, but I'm also very anxious for students who are not athletes to be able to participate safely in their after-school activities, whether they be arts or some other. So if there's anything that we can do to really focus on that, so that we can get back to whatever part of normal that we can recapture before, you know, in this third quarter. Can you tell us a little bit more about JV and middle school? You mentioned conditioning, so will that, will JV athletes and middle school athletes be able to do anything as a team? I mean, because right now, you know, some, what's happening with winter sports is that, you know, students are being emailed and contacted by their coaches, so there's a sense of community, but there's no team. There's no team activity. Will that be different moving forward for the fall sports and for middle sports? Could you?
So the answer, yes, absolutely. At the high school level, we're gonna continue to allow students to engage in conditioning, which they've been doing all year, connecting with coaches, having that connection. As far as the springtime, our current, looking forward, we'd like to involve more students across the board in spring, especially considering that last year, that was the season that all students missed out on, so that's our goal. We're planning for that. We're having discussion at the middle school level as well. Middle school is not participating right now, but their, their teachers are reaching out and, and, you know, club sponsors and of that nature. It's a little different in middle school because a lot of, there's not as many coaches, and they're not all in the building. But we are doing everything we can to connect with activities and sports, but the spring will hopefully look a lot different.
Thanks, yeah, as much as we can do to get kids, you know, engaged would be great. And then one of the athletic directors talked about, you know, if there's a case that things, things will shut down. I think, and then I think you added clarifying language, but I want to make sure I'm clear on this. So just like any kind of isolation and quarantine, if there's a case, maybe you might have to forfeit a game, but the season's not over. Like if you wait your, the appropriate time, then that team can, can continue forward, right? I mean, it's not, it's not mistakes, right?
Yeah, our hope is that all along the way that we're all doing what we should be doing, our athletes, our coaches and everything. We're minimizing our bubble, we're taking, we're being safe, we're using our mitigation strategies. And when we come to, whether it's an athletic event, an activity, or to school, we have the same process in place that we have as a division. So if you have a symptom, we're gonna tell the nurse. The nurse, we're gonna follow through our mitigation strategies as a division. And sometimes it may end up being that, you know, a team is on quarantine for a couple of weeks, or we have to miss a game. We've seen that play out, you know, daily as we watched some of the winter sports take place. So we're just gonna really focus on safety and try our best to give kids the opportunity to have a season in a safe manner. That's our goal.
Thank you, and then?
Also, yeah, and I just, it's a great point by Dr. Worley, but we're also, we're also in a fairly compressed season. And so that's the other piece that I think we need to keep in mind, because the timeframe is a lot shorter, this idea of potential quarantine for a player or team does have the opportunity to really eat into a season that's shortened by virtue of the high school league calendar. So I think that's important for everybody to recognize. And if you've looked across the Commonwealth in terms of folks participating in winter, there have been a number of teams that have had to pause, that have missed significant playing time as a result of that. So that, that wouldn't be something too unfamiliar for us as we get into the fall season.
Understood. I just hope moving forward that the default position is to participate, not to not participate, right? So I think it's, it's, it's time to pivot in that direction. And then the spectator question, I think, I think if I remember correctly, the governor was pretty clear that without side sports, everybody could have two spectators. And in, but your decision is different than that. Can you please help us understand the spectator decision, please? I think we heard some from some families, but I'm curious myself.
Yes, we are just looking at right now with the, you know, the number on the gatherings of being ten or lower and just easing into this. We want to make sure that we do everything carefully with clarity, giving our kids the opportunity to perform. And at the beginning, we were, we just made the decision for no spectators because it's just much clearer for us to navigate and manage that. Looking forward, I'm not saying that it will stay that way the entire time, but we also have the opportunity for people to participate through the livestream opportunities as well. It gets hard to put a, you know, limitation to say only two, or, and by the time, and some of our games that are actually inside, the number of people that it takes to run the scoreboard, to officiate and all of that, your numbers start to get high in a game anyway without spectators. You're just being very careful.
I understand, and I appreciate that. I just hope moving forward as soon as possible, the default position becomes including spectators. Because I do think, I understand the indoor thing, and when the, and when the numbers get high for the people helping to run scoreboards, et cetera. But outside, I think, is a different situation. So I, I hope that you're able to, you know, rethink that at some point soon. And then, so I think that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Ms. Humble?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Dr. Heron, we received several emails about parents that are having to make decisions about next year, and whether their children should go to a private school or stay in WJCC based on whether or not our intention is to go back five days a week with no hybrid AB kind of schedule. Could you talk about that? I know you mentioned it a little bit with Ms. Cook's question, but I just wondered if you could confirm or elaborate on exactly how you see the fall looking. And I know nothing's written in stone, but how, as the superintendent of the division, how you are intending for the fall to look?
Mrs. Humble, obviously, we want all students back in school. That has been our desire from, from day one and continues to be, to be that. And that is what we'll be moving towards, is having all students back in school in the fall.
And we just won't know until until later in the summer whether having all the kids back means five days a week or not, or?
I think there's a lot of changing things in our environment right now. I think the rollout of vaccinations is going to become major in every community. I think movement has started in that, in that area. And I think that's gonna be a changer and a game changer in every single community, as well as in schools.
So the hope is five days a week, the hope is, is for everyone five days a week?
We are going to do everything we can to, to get every student in school as much as possible.
Okay, and then my, thank you. And then my other questions are for Dr. Worley, and they're more sports-related, and it's just kind of clarification questions. So one of the, one of the coaches said if there, someone on the team contracts COVID, or they might have to cancel their game. I'm assuming that's just for that one team, right? It's not going to be, it's not going to roll over to all the high schools. It'll only impact the high school that has the problem, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We'll follow our same process for any time there's a situation with a possible case. Our same mitigation strategy is notify the nurse, and it'll be a case-by-case basis.
And then for the fall sports schedule, I just, I don't have it in front of me, the VHSL schedule, but But is the, is this timeframe of when fall sports is starting? Uh, or is that in alignment with our neighboring's VHSL competitors? Or is it, is it in, in alignment? Are, are, are they all playing the same amount of time right now?
It, it's pretty much in line. We have started our um, uh, like four days later, our actual first practice tryout thing uh, at the beginning, but uh, we made some adjustments. Looking at this, giving time for communication and planning and making it more in align with our, our division goal for our return to learn plan. But yes, it's the same timeframe. They're participating in uh, games in align with the VHSL.
Okay. And then for spring, when we look at spring with the, the middle schools, once again, the idea is that if we're still going the same positive trajectory, that we could add middle school for spring. Is that correct? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other board members? Mr. Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, so part of my question kind of has been touched on when we talk about sports. And what happens when um, I guess a student or, or athlete contracts the virus? Uh, Dr. Worley, you mentioned quarantine for a couple of weeks. Um, my, my question, and it, it also kind of ties in with what we learned at the last board member meeting from uh, the Health Advisory Committee. Schools do essentially act as a, an agent of control for COVID spread for a community. Um, does the previous, I guess, strategy to, I guess, control for spread in a building, in a classroom environment? Say student gets COVID, COVID positive. Previously, we sh- we would shut down the, the classroom, if not the school uh, for at least a week, maybe weeks on end. Uh, with what we now know, paired with uh, greater and greater numbers of persons, teachers uh, having access to the, to the, to the juice, as Mr. Kelly calls it. I- is that still appropriate? Is that still the, the, the necessary response to a COVID outbreak in a classroom? To, to take them out of that classroom environment for weeks at a time? I- i- is there any guidance that we've gotten from our Health Advisory Committee on what an appropriate um, response or even shutdown or temporary, long-term in a classroom environment should look like? And I'm really concerned about that. I'd, I'd like an answer regarding that because they've been out of, we had K through three i- i- in, in the schools, the longest, uh, fourth and fifth had, I think, all of five days. Uh, they've not been in the classroom. They wanna be in the classroom. Uh, they need to be in the classroom. We're hearing that. Uh, I, I'm curious, when we do see incidents of COVID in the classroom, does that response still need to be the same now, knowing what we know now?
Uh, Mr. Dow, I, I believe that we would want to follow the, the specific mitigation health safety protocols that are in our, that are in our guidelines that, and it's going to be very specific case by case. And so part of, I don't wanna opine on potential length of time based on various factors. Because a lot of it has to do with, is it a positive test? Is it determined to be a close contact? Wh- what are we able to, and, and going through the, the, the close contact tracing piece, what are we able to determine actually occurred? And, and I think that those things still stay in play. That, that it, it, it wouldn't be appropriate to say it's a, it's a shortened amount of time or it's more time. But we would look at it very specifically, student generated or classroom generated or team generated. Because I think that part of what we've seen is that when we can attack it from that vantage point, we have a much better picture of what it is that occurred and how do we help support maybe a removal of a person or persons versus an entire school. So I think from the get-go, we have attempted to look at it classroom-specific, person-specific. And when we needed to, take in a, a more holistic approach and saying, you know, this school needs to be remote for two weeks because we're not able to pinpoint it.
I, I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other board members? Okay, um, couple of questions. So, so Mr. Keever, we said we offered it a twelve seventy-five. How many, how many took it? What are we looking at as far as a percentage of people who are actually taking the vaccine versus?
Uh, twelve seventy-five is the actual number that we vaccinated. So the, the offer was uh, to the eighteen hundred seventeen fifty-three. When we initially did our first, our first go out to full staff saying, are you interested in this? I believe the number that we shared back with the county was somewhere in the upper fifteen, sixteen hundred range in terms of desire to participate. Um, so we, we feel like that's gonna be the number where we land as we get through the rest of this week and even look into next week. We've got some folks this week that wanna be able to be vaccinated and aren't able to based on isolation and quarantine.
Sure.
We're, we're talking about adding in substitute teachers later this week. We're talking about, you know, non, non-employee coaches, those kinds of things.
Got you. Um, and when are we gonna start going into the second vaccine cycle? And?
That's a phenomenal question. Uh, in, in talking with the county and city about what, what that process is going to, to take. You, we could anticipate that since our first vaccine happened on or about the twenty-first or twenty-second of January, somewhere in the neighborhood of February nineteenth, that Friday would probably be the four-week mark. And with the Moderna vaccine, it's a, it's a four-week suggested turnaround. So I, I think that we will start to see dose two beginning on approximately the nineteenth or so of February. I'm sharing that out loud. However, there has not been any formalized plan put in place and we still have some work to do to finish up round one.
Yeah, I mean, there's still asterisks there, right? So when uh, as far as availability of the vaccine and are we gonna get it and that kind of thing? So, but that's, that would be kind of our, our plan. So I just, I just wanna thank you and the team for, for, for accomplishing that. You know, getting everybody an opportunity to get vaccinated and getting the vaccines and working with the localities and getting that done. I think that's a great, great work on, on the part of the administration and working in conjunction with, with the localities. I, I just wanna congratulate you and thank you for the, for the effort in getting that done. So much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
I do, I do also say, you know, our numbers right now that you showed, uh, showed were, you know, eighty-eighty-four, point nine per hundred thousand. Um, while that is still a deep dark red, it's, it's not nearly as red as it has been. Um, we have been at higher, higher pinnacles. And when I look at the change in new cases per hundred thousand and negative forty-five, that, that gives me hope that we're uh, moving in the right direction and hopefully in a significant manner. So um, fingers crossed. Hope we, hope we keep doing the right things um, and getting down there. Um, uh, Kathy answered the question I had about uh, parents and stands for outdoor sports. So uh, I'd like to also reiterate what Mrs. Cook and others said about uh, about, you know, getting, getting to uh, getting kids back in school. Um, I think it's, I, I think we heard a lot of the compelling uh, discussion at our last school board meeting, as Mr. Dow said, about uh, you know, the, the, the need to get kids in school. Um, you know, we're, we're not necessarily on the, on the bleeding edge of that spear, but uh, you know, we're ahead of a lot of others too. And, and a lot of other school systems in, in our region have pushed off a little farther. I saw, I know, I saw Hampton pushed off behind us today. So um, you know, there's, there's, there's still, you know, a point for some, for some thinking and some, and uh, consideration before we, we march heartily along. Uh, that said, that, you know, the phase three, we showed that we ended, we ended the phase three in March with K, with, with. Some point in March, we had K through twelve in. I'd hope you put some consideration that uh, as we get towards the end of phase three, we look at phase four and start doing the same thing with the other, uh, with the, you know, with their, with their, going back into our elementary school with K through five and start thinking about putting them in school for five days a week. Obviously depending upon where we are in March and where we are as uh, as we go forward and with vaccination in cases. But I think that would, I think that would uh, should be kind of our plan and our guidance is to, is to do instead of to do not. So that's my thought. Any, any other comments from board members? Or from anyone else? Mr. Keever, Dr. Worley, you have any final thoughts? Dr. Heron?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Keever, appreciate, and Dr. Worley, appreciate your uh, putting this presentation together and coming tonight and talking with us. Uh, much, much appreciated. And I think uh, both the board and the community appreciate the, the work you put in, in the, in your, in the presentation that you've made. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that takes us to seven point zero one, personnel actions. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we uh, approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Ms. Robinson? You are muted.
Mr. Dow?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you very much. That takes us to eight point zero one, board members' comments. Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to start by um, thanking our callers who called in. Uh, we never tire of hearing from the community and I think all of us are experiencing COVID fatigue. Uh, but I do think that there's light at the end of the tunnel. And so I appreciate folks for hanging in there with us. Uh, the vaccine is a game changer. And um, appreciate the, the collaboration with the city and the county uh, and the Department of Health to make that happen for our staff. We're still experiencing our, our COVID world. I'm glad that the Virginia School Board Association was able to host their annual conference and uh, many of us could participate virtually. We weren't able to go to uh, Richmond like we typically do, but it was great to hear from the governor and to hear that he is considering uh, funding um, pre-K and um, counselors at the pre-K through twelfth grade um, level and is, is addressing teacher raises. So Ms. Cook mentioned earlier um, the term homework gap, which is, I think, recently coined. And so I learned about that um, through V S B A. And that really is the, the idea that students have access, little to no access to technology. And while I, along with my colleague and so many people in the community, would prefer to have our students um, in school five days a week. I do appreciate Dr. Heron and her staff's forethought um, way back in the day, back last March, and, and then using CARES money to fully implement our division's one-to-one program. Um, if we had not tapped into those CARES dollars, it would have taken years to fully implement our one-to-one. And that's something that will only help our division as we move forward. Um, cause all of our students will now always have access to that technology and that will be incorporated into all of their studies. So there's many education bills that are surrounding um, our, our legislators. And so I learned a lot uh, at V S B A about um, standardized testing and the real cost of education and um, looking at our current funding formulas. And so I'm grateful that we were able to continue to include our funding partners and our advocacy um, efforts. Um, it was virtual um, again. And so I thank them for listening to our point of view. Um, and holding steady um, on uh, making sure there's no unfunded mandates. And so just um, appreciate the opportunity to, to meet with those legislators uh, virtually. I'm looking forward to additional meetings this week. And thank you, Ms. Cook, for coordinating that. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Um, I wanted to thank everyone for their presentations tonight. And um, also really thank the teachers that went out there and staff and got vaccinated in the last couple of weeks so that we can move forward. And thank our uh, all, all the, the school nurses that uh, set up the vaccination clinics and made it run so smoothly. So uh, there are a lot of um, behind the scenes uh, heroes that are, are steadfastly working to get us back to uh, some kind of uh, normalcy. So I wanted to just shout out uh, my appreciation to all of them uh, working behind the scenes. I wish that all of our, I, I, all of our faculty, staff and students who have COVID right now, um, I wish them a very speedy recovery. And um, I wanna really thank my colleague, uh, Kira Cook for all of her hard work in arranging all of the, the opportunities that we had during the V S B A legislative session to be able to hear from our, our um, elected officials. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to echo all the uh, thanks and support um, that, that have already been mentioned uh, with regard to our incredible staff, all the work that they're doing, continuing to prepare um, as we move forward. Um, I think the other thing to begin to recognize and um, uh, Mr. Kelly pointed that out as well is um, although we're still not out of the woods, the COVID nineteen numbers do seem to be looking um, better. And, and for me, that's really, uh, continues to be an indication that the public really is, has been and is and will continue to take this virus very seriously and recognize that um, if they do the things that they are, are, are actually doing, um, those numbers will continue to go down. And as they continue to go down, our opportunities for the return of students um, into their class, our schools and our classrooms will continue to go up. Um, and um, uh, for that, I, I thank the public. Um, I know they're, I know um, they're still frustrated. Um, I, and I certainly don't wanna belittle that concern that they have um, at all. Um, while my children are grown, I have four grandchildren who are in two different school divisions. Um, and believe me, um, I have shared s- some of the things that they've had to endure and also their parents have had to endure. Uh, because they're, they're both school divisions are totally virtual and have been. Um, but uh, anyway, um, that's the end of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Yes, uh, yes. Uh, well, first of all, thank you very much for uh, the presentations tonight from our presenters. I appreciate the information that we're receiving. I, I think um, thank Ms. Cook for arranging our meeting with our legislators in the Virginia House and Senate. Um, I, I, I think my concern is, is, and, and my desire is that we get kids back in school as quickly as possible. Uh, but I think that's the desire of the whole board. Um, we just need to, to be patient and to make sure that we're doing things in a way that, that best benefits the, the most people. Um, I, I would like to see us in school sooner rather than later, but I will leave that those decisions up to our superintendent and her staff who have their finger on that pulse. So uh, that's, that's all for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I, I'd just like to mention, uh, follow up on what Ms. Ombi said about the homework gap. And just um, when I was on the phone with uh, fellow school board members from other parts of the state, I learned that their uh, rush to get devices um, uh, didn't work. They got CARES Act money and they had it to spend and their Lenovo contracts were canceled because Lenovo couldn't keep up with demand. But our staff was on top of that. They were ahead of the curve and they got devices in our students' hands. And so uh, you know, despite the frustration of online learning, virtual learning, I think it's important to, to call out um, excellent work in that we were able to do what many, many divisions around the state were not able to do, which is to make sure that every single student had a device. So I thank you for that, um, Dr. Heron. Uh, please thank your team for that. Um, I spoke with Rabbi Katz today. Um, he, he was calling about um, not starting school next year on Rosh Hashanah. And I know we've discussed that as a group and I think the school board has stated that um, that it is not the desire to, to, to start, have the first day of school on a major religious holiday, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I know that that calendar is coming back to us at some point for action, but I just wanted to share that I had that um, that conversation today. Um, and then I just, I, I wanna- Um, and then I just, I, I want to thank everybody for their time and, and, uh, energy in putting today, today's meeting together is excellent, as always. I want to thank the, um, you know, people who called in, uh, you know, oh, Dr. Heron talked about, uh, this being school board appreciation month. And I, I've never liked that. I've, I've always felt that that was very self-serving, frankly. Um, but I, I do want to say that I appreciate this entire school board and everyone on the school board is very dedicated. And so although I appreciate, um, everyone who called in today, I think sometimes it's more important to be respectful to those that you disagree with um, and to listen and understand and learn. And I just want to say that, um, the people who are on the school board, the majority of them have spent their entire adult lives dedicated to public education. And I don't think that that should be taken lightly. So I just want to call that out and say that I appreciate all of you. And, um, and so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Is that your, uh, V S B A scarf that you're wearing there?
Ed for red, red for ed.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, just, uh, wanted to share my appreciation to all of our callers, but in particular to our two students that called in. Don't hear from students that often, but it's always a, a pleasure and a privilege to, to know that you're, you care, you're listening, you're, you're active in these conversations and your voice does matter too. So thank you to those that called in and, and I appreciate you lending your voice to those you represent to. Um, we, we also had another caller that, uh, wanted to ask for some considerations for summer schools. And so I thought perhaps for staff, it would be beneficial for, for me, for the board, for our community to, in a future meeting, Dr. Heron, to perhaps hear your strategy, perhaps not the full picture. I'm sure it's being developed, uh, but give us a glimpse, if you would, uh, on what summer school would look like. And, uh, what this caller really was asking for was, and I think I would quote it, uh, offer summer school to as many students as would like it. Uh, when I was in grade school, you, you kind of had to earn the opportunity for summer school. That's probably changed or hopefully it hasn't changed, but, uh, you know, I think that there's probably going to be a lot of students that would like to take advantage of that opportunity if it was made to them. So I appreciated that caller to, um, bringing that to light, that opportunity that we could potentially meet. So, but that's all I wanted to add tonight. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. I, I really have nothing to add to what, uh, my colleagues have talked, have talked about, um, uh, the COVID fatigue. And as Dr. Beer has mentioned, the numbers are getting better. We're, we're moving in the right direction and, um, we seem to be picking up pace and moving in the right direction. And that is, that is good to see. And, and thanks to the community, uh, for, for, as Dr. Beer said, uh, implementing those protocols and mitigating that risk as best as possible. I want to also thank again, thanks, thank our administration for, um, to work in getting the, getting the staff vaccinated and getting us in that line and working with the localities. I think that is just outstanding. And, uh, I, I know that, uh, I know that our teachers and our staff really appreciate that. I want to thank the staff for their presentations tonight and their thoughts about return and their, you know, about return to learn and all the good thinking that they have put in on that. Um, it's not as easy as going to the school door and unlocking the door and opening it up to open schools back up. There's a lot of uh, coordination, uh, particularly as you get into the middle and high school level about class schedules and having, having those things, uh, available and, and having that somewhat organized. So it's, it's, it's not as easy as just, okay, we're open today. And so everybody who wants to come can come because, uh, you know, you gotta have a classes, you gotta have a classes for on their class schedule and, and, uh, it's, it's a real challenge. So I appreciate the, the great work that they're putting into, to getting our schools open and getting our students back in, back in classroom. Um, I want to thank, uh, add my voice to the many that, of my colleagues that talked about the public and their, uh, the public comments tonight, uh, both tonight and other, and throughout this whole return to learn process. It's kind of come in waves of, for, for, uh, some of the emails of, you know, put kids back in school to keep kids out, uh, they, those seem to kind of come in waves depending upon where we are in our return, return to learn process. But, uh, um, uh, all, everyone's comments are heard and appreciated. And I really, I really want to thank all of those folks for, for sending their comments and, and, uh, letting us know, uh, how they, how they feel. Um, and we certainly appreciate that. We appreciate, uh, um, the frustration and we also appreciate the desire for, uh, for safety too. So all of those things are, are foremost on our mind and foremost on the administration's mind as well. So with that, uh, take us to nine point zero one upcoming events. We have the student advisory committee on February tenth at three o'clock. Uh, special education advisory committee on February eleventh at six thirty. The policy committee on February eighteenth at eight thirty in the morning. The Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee at, uh, on March tenth at three thirty. And all meetings are virtual. So, uh, upcoming meetings for the school board, we have a closed session February sixteenth at six o'clock, which is in room three hundred in the annex. Uh, we have a regular meeting following that at February sixteenth at six thirty, uh, which will also be in room three hundred in the annex. And, uh, we have a closed session, March, March second, six o'clock, uh, in room three hundred on, in the annex. And then on March second at six thirty, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operating budget immediately followed by the work session and action items. So, um, uh, we, we are virtual tonight, uh, because of, uh, some COVID concerns with the administration and to help, help them, help them attend. Um, but we intend to go back to room three hundred in our upcoming meetings, uh, and go back to at least the board meeting in person. So, I don't know if we have, uh, many action items for our next meeting based upon what we have here. I'm sure we're going to have more discussion on the return to learn and the operating budget. But, uh, and Dr. Heron, when do you present your budget?
Uh, at the next meeting, sir.
So that will be a, that won't be for our vote though. That'll just be, be for our discussion, right?
Yes, sir.
Great. So, with that, that, uh, takes us to eleven point one. I want to thank the board members for, uh, their attendance tonight and the ability to pivot to a virtual format. Uh, thank everybody for their questions and their, uh, attention. And I really appreciate, uh, the good, the good work that the board has done tonight. And thank the staff for, for supporting us and giving us great information. So, uh, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.